All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, May 8th, 2023. I've got seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order. Just a quick housekeeping item before we get started. There is a special council meeting tonight that will begin promptly at eight o'clock regardless of where we are in the Committee of the Whole agenda. So we'll adjourn the committee, begin the recess, excuse me, the, thank you, Mr. President, recess, the Committee of the Whole meeting, begin special counsel, and once that's completed, we'll resume, we'll pick up Committee of the Whole where we left off. I'd like to begin this evening with a presentation on zoning considerations. We are fortunate this evening to be joined by Glennon Sweeney, Senior Research Associate at the Kerwin Institute for the Study of Race and Ethnicity at THE Ohio State University. Glennon, I'll turn things over to you. Thank you for being here and looking forward to your presentation.
Can you hear me? Does this work? Is it better if I just go like this? So do I need this? Okay, it's working. If I, oh, okay. All right, gotcha. We're good. All right. So I want to talk a little bit about zoning and exclusionary zoning. And I'm going to start by thinking about inequality and how inequality is spatial. I should be talking to you guys, right? Sorry, I really have trouble with people behind me. I'm going to see if this is working. Okay, I pushed it twice, but I was told not to push it too many times. All right, there we go. This one's going to be a lot of clicks. So one thing at Kerwin that we've noticed when we started, so Kerwin made our name by doing spatial analysis. And one of the things we noticed when we started mapping things in central Ohio is that we see the same patterns. This is infant mortality, and if you notice, there is an upside-down T that runs like south of I-70 and east of I-71. And if you look at all of these maps, we're going to see that same upside-down T. This is poverty, or sorry, opportunity, the light areas are lower opportunities, same upside-down T. I think we do poverty next, same upside-down T. And then we do incarceration, same upside-down T. Then we do older adult vulnerability and density. You'll see the same upside-down T. And then we'll do life expectancy. And so I do want to just take a moment on life expectancy, and this is pre-pandemic, which is probably better data for this right now. We don't have post-pandemic data available yet. But if we look at Franklin County, and this map's a little weird, but Dublin has the highest life expectancy track, thirty-five, sixty-five, or sorry, eighty-five plus is what they're living to in Dublin. Franklinton has the lowest life expectancy track in central Ohio, and there is a 26.7-year difference in life expectancies between those tracks. That means that people living in Franklinton, on average, are dying before their 65th birthday, which means they aren't getting Social Security, they aren't getting access to Medicare, they aren't getting access to a lot of the services and benefits of being an older adult, but they're probably experiencing the life conditions of being an older adult in their 40s and 50s. They just don't have access to services. We call that the impact of cumulative disadvantage at the Kerwin Institute. And I'm going to talk about how policy creates communities like Franklinton a little bit, but I'm going to focus more on how places like Gehanna can become more equitable. There we go. So when we think about metropolitan space, we tend to think about it in this dichotomy of urban and suburban. You guys think that suburb looks really nice there? That's Whitehall, by the way. People are always surprised when I tell them that. But I want to go back in history a little bit and talk about the origins of the suburbs that we think of today, those white picket fence suburbs that we have in our mind, right, with single-family homes when I say suburb, right, two-car garages, green lawns, right? These were a product of around the turn of the 20th century. And what happened is that prior to this, we were building suburbs very differently. Things like streetcar suburbs, where developers were developing a lot or two at a time because that's all they had money to develop. They'd build the house, they'd sell the house, they'd buy the next lot, they'd build the house, sell the house, and on they went. But in the 1890s, a group of guys got together and they said, what if we got a bunch of money? And we bought a huge tract of land, and we developed it slowly. And if we did it that way, we could control who lives in the neighborhood. And so they called up their buddies, and by the way, their buddies just happened to be the same people who were funding British colonial exploits all over the globe. So there's this tie of early suburbs in America and colonialism in terms of funding. And they said, hey, will you fund this? And the guy said, sure. And so they started building these communities. And they framed them as safe white spaces, safe white spaces, as healthy, clean escapes. And we have to keep in mind that cities were pretty gross in the 1890s. Sewers were just starting to be installed. We didn't really have much in terms of building regulations. And people believed that the bad conditions in cities, the overcrowding, or congestion, as they called it at the time, you know, the health issues coming from overcrowding, the, you know, issues when there's a fire, for example, or something that goes wrong in a building that impacts other buildings with overcrowding, that was blamed on the people living in those neighborhoods and not the structures, the policies, right, the regulations or lack thereof. And so cities were dirty, right? Rivers were sewers, right? In central Ohio, if you notice that upside-down T, the space is bigger on the south side, that's because the rivers run south. And so the least desirable land was downriver because that's where everyone's trash went. So they started building these suburbs. And in fact, there was a guy in central Ohio who was part of this group of people who built these first suburbs. His name was King Thompson. He founded Upper Arlington and built a lot of the homes in Grandview as well. And he formed a group called Developers of High-Class Residential Properties. And gotta love him because he made sure they took very detailed meeting minutes of all of their meetings, so we know all the things he said. And they created best practices. They disseminated them all over the country, telling people how to build these suburbs. And they framed them as restricted. And I'm going to talk about what that means in just a second. But first, I want to talk about the other side of these guys. Because I mentioned King Thompson, he was a developer, but he was also a realtor. He founded one of the biggest realty firms in central Ohio, King Thompson Realty. And around the same time that these guys were building these first suburbs, the field of realty was becoming professionalized. And very early on, these realtors realized they could make a profit off of segregation. So they began to propagate a lie, or what I call the biggest myth that Americans continue to believe. And that is the mixing of racial and social classes harms property values. That is untrue. It has always been untrue. There have only been a few cases where we can say empirically that this is true, and those are cases where you build huge public housing developments in areas of concentrated poverty. Otherwise, this is false. But everybody bought it. They bought it to the point that we created two housing markets. One that was large, competitive, and offered affordability because it was competitive, and it was for whites. And everyone considered white, and we'll talk about who was considered white because that changed over time, too. And then there was another one, and it was small, it was geographically constrained, and it was super competitive because it was way smaller than it needed to be, and that was for everyone who was non-white. And prior to this, there was segregation, but it was de facto. And after this, policymakers started realizing they could adopt these things into laws. And so that's what started happening. But first, it started with private agreements. So there was a racial hierarchy. Wealthy white Protestants were at the top. Protestants were the best. Catholics were not considered white at one point. I'm serious. Irish people were not considered white. Italian people were not considered white. Wealthy non-Protestant whites, but you had to be Christian. If you were wealthy, you might be on the second tier. Poor whites came after that, and anyone considered non-white was after that. Jews were not white. Italians were not white. And the category of white changed over time as groups became accepted. And so what these early developers did is they created restrictive covenants. Because this was a way that within the property deed, the private agreement property deed, they could restrict who could own, sorry, I went too far, who could own, occupy properties, and what people could do with these properties. And so this is an example of a racial restriction. And now Gehanna isn't on this. You guys are lucky, you were too far out at the time or not big enough. But this is the extent of entire subdivisions. It isn't just individual houses. This is entire subdivisions platted with racial restrictions in central Ohio, almost 50% between 1900 and 1945. Now, Gehanna isn't on this list because Gehanna wasn't part of the study that Patricia Burgess did. But Gehanna used racially restrictive covenants in some neighborhoods, because I pulled this from a Gehanna property deed. And it says, "That said premises or any part thereof shall not be sold, leased, mortgaged, pledged, given, or otherwise disposed of to, or owned, used, or occupied by any person or organization of persons in whole or in part of the Negro race or blood, provided that nothing herein shall prohibit a person, while occupying said premises in compliance with this restriction, from employing a servant, a person not of the white race." Now, what's interesting is that you guys are on the east side of Columbus. East side racial restrictions are unique. In the rest of central Ohio, the restrictions are broad. They're more like this one, saying anyone who is not a member of the Caucasian race. But yours is very specific. Bexley's were written like that, and Bexley is the neighborhood Jews were able to first break into. And we believe part of the reason they were able to do that is because this doesn't say anyone who's non-white for most of it. It says a little bit at the bottom, but it's specifying Negroes. And the other ones on the east side have also called out Asians. But that isn't the extent of restrictive covenants. And in fact, the racial restrictions aren't even the piece or the part of restrictive covenants that still impact us today. Because restrictive covenants are where we first saw setbacks. It's where we first saw youth, like single-family-only clauses. They included often price, like you had to spend a certain amount of money building your home. You had to have a certain square footage. So they had all of these other restrictions that were included. They also restricted agriculture because African-Americans and Eastern Europeans, and Eastern Europeans were not considered white, by the way, were more likely to have agriculture as a part of life. So it was restricted in many communities. But this is price and use, saying only a single family, private dwelling, and then it's saying it cannot cost less than $6,500, which at the time was, you know, God, I wish we could buy houses for that now, but at the time was more expensive. And what's interesting is that these were very quickly codified into zoning law. We still see setbacks. We still see use clauses. We see size requirements in zoning codes. Those have not gone away. And a lot of times, they were borrowed directly from restrictive covenants in the neighborhoods that were being zoned. And they adopted racial zoning in a lot of cities. I have no evidence they did that in Columbus or Gehanna, but between 1910 and 1917, racial zoning proliferated throughout the United States. And that was a time of immense growth. So it set into motion a lot of development patterns. But after 1917, there was a case, Buchanan v. Worley, racial zoning was decided to be a violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. And so there was a shift. And that's when they really started adopting more of those restrictions into zoning codes, right? We're going to only have single family. We're going to have a lot-size requirement, quarter acre, half-acre, whole acre, right? The bigger the lot, the more money you have to spend, right? Exclusionary zoning, what it does is it increases the cost to construct, to maintain, to purchase a property, right? And it can do things like it can say that you have to, the building can only take up 30% of the lot. So if you want a building that's big, you need a bigger lot, right? And if you can only build a single-family house, anyone who can't afford that can't live in the neighborhood. And then there was expulsion zoning. And so this was used a lot of times. So for example, in Baltimore, there were, so there were these early suburbs that white people were building, and they were restricting anyone considered non-white. But there was a lot of black wealth at the turn of the 20th century as well. So a lot of African-Americans were building their own suburbs, and there were examples of this in Baltimore. But these early suburbs were really within city limits and often wanted to be. They wanted water services from cities. So they tried to be close to cities and often would get, well, the white ones would get preferential treatment in terms, they'd even bypass some neighborhoods to give them sewer lines in a lot of cases. But in Baltimore, the black suburbs and the black wealth was all on one side of town. So when the city of Baltimore enacted a zoning code, they just zoned that entire area industrial. Expulsive zoning is zoning that is aimed at taking wealth out of property, which is what taking a residential neighborhood and turning it into an industrial one will do. It is also a way of pushing undesirable land uses towards already minoritized populations. They're less likely to fight back, is the policy reason why this is done. But it further minoritizes these people. And so this is where cities still are today. They're using exclusionary expulsion zoning tactics to control who is allowed in their cities. Because at the end of the day, all of this is about wealth. Because property ownership is the number-one way that Americans built wealth in the 20th century. Policies like, or practices like restrictive covenants were aimed at not allowing African-Americans to build wealth. When they were adopted into law like zoning code, they became policy, right? And it's a de jure way of ensuring segregation. And then we had the creation of the FHA in 1934. That was preceded, though, by an act called the Homeowners Loan Corporation Act of 1933. And this is the act that created the policy we all know as redlining today. It's really interesting because this policy was actually created for a very narrow purpose. When the Depression hit, or actually, I should preface that by saying, prior to the Depression, if you wanted to buy a home, you basically had to have a pretty good amount of money because you had to have a 50% down payment. Then you had a mortgage, and the life of that mortgage was between five and 15 years, during which you are only paying on the interest. So you have at the end what is known as a balloon payment, where you are paying the other 50%. So most people never got that final payment. They might roll it over into a new mortgage and keep trying, but a lot of people just couldn't do it. And those that were able to were often wealthier. They were also the same people who were buying stocks, though. And we all know what happened in '29 when the stock market crashed. Well, those same people then stopped paying their mortgages and banks went under. And in the aftermath of this, the federal government made a couple of key decisions. They decided that homeownership was something they wanted to promote, that homeowners were better citizens, and they wanted more homeowners in the United States. So they made that decision. They also decided that they could not allow the banks to get into this situation again. So they wanted to create a federal mortgage insurance program. And that's where these maps come in. Because if you're going to get into the business of insuring mortgages, you better make sure you're not insuring risky ones. This is a map of risk. This is a map of risk. Red means riskiest. Green means least risky. And one interesting thing about central Ohio, the only places that were green are places that were platted with racially restrictive covenants. Notice Worthington is largely blue and yellow. Grandview Heights is blue. Grandview and Worthington were built before we started using racial restrictions, or founded, I should say, before we started using racial restrictions in central Ohio. There are neighborhoods within Worthington -- I haven't gotten to Grandview yet, so I can't say for sure, but I'm pretty sure because I think they were on the list. But there are neighborhoods in Worthington that were platted with racial restrictions. But that was done after these maps. Because what these colors signify is how much federal mortgage insurance you are eligible for. And these specific maps, they're the ones that everyone knows, were used for the sole purpose of determining who was safe to roll over into the new mortgages they were creating. A grade got you 80% of the value of your home back in a federally insured mortgage. It's a 20% down payment, and it is the origin of the mortgage we have today. B-grade neighborhoods, they covered 65%, so you have a 35% down payment. C-grade neighborhoods, and by the way, B-grade neighborhoods in central Ohio were all white. They just weren't platted with racial restrictions and founded that way, like Arlington, like the Bexley neighborhoods that incorporated so they could zone. A lot of suburbs became suburbs so they could zone. They were just planned suburban developments that came together, and Bexley is an example of that. So yellow areas were often places where Eastern European immigrants, because this was in the 1930s, were living, also areas close to industry. They were eligible for 15% of the value of their home in a federally insured mortgage. That's an 85% down payment. So these areas were largely disenfranchised in the way that D-grade neighborhoods were. And by the way, in Worthington, those yellow areas, those are where African-Americans lived. That's why those areas were yellow in Worthington. We don't have the notes, the assessor notes, for all the maps in central Ohio, so we have to do sleuthing to understand why they got the grades they got. And D-grade neighborhoods were neighborhoods where people who were considered non-white lived. And they didn't receive any federal mortgage insurance, which meant they were disenfranchised from buying homes. And by the way, did I mention property ownership is the number-one way that Americans build wealth? This is about wealth.
Ms. Sweeney, may I pause you for just a moment, just since we've had a few folks who've come in after we started the meeting. So we are in our regular committee of the whole meeting. The special council meeting will begin at 8 o'clock, so we'll recess from committee and begin the special council meeting. If you would like to speak at the special council meeting, please fill out a speaker slip and pass it over to our wonderful Clerk Van Meter if you'd like to do so. Thank you. Back to you, Ms. Sweeney.
No problem. Welcome, everyone who came in. And then one other thing I'll say about this is that redlining, codified into law, the association that black equals risk, and that has not left our consciousness in this And by the way, wealthy black neighborhoods were also redlined because black people lived there. It didn't matter if your neighborhood was nice. It didn't matter if you had wealth. It mattered what the people who lived in the neighborhood looked like. Now, this was the end of redlining by the Homeowners' Loan Corporation. But remember how I said in 1934, the FHA was created? Well, guess what? They just took up the practice. They were smart, though. They didn't save their maps. So we can see the impact of this, right? If you lived in a neighborhood like Bronzeville or the Near East Side that was redlined and you were wealthy, because there were a lot of very wealthy African-Americans and Jews living in Bronzeville in 1934, or '36, I'm sorry, when our map was made, you would move, right? You would take your wealth and move. These are the places you could not go, where they were pladding neighborhoods with racial restrictions. And by the way, those are the neighborhoods where property values were increasing. It's about wealth. So in 1948, there was another Supreme Court case, Shelley v. Kramer. And this one was very narrow, but it determined that racially restrictive covenants, and only racially restrictive covenants, the other restrictive covenants are fine, are a violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. But it was such a narrow decision that there was a white guy in Detroit, and he sued the black man who moved in next to him, claiming loss of property value because of the myth that was a lie, and he won. And so it really wasn't until, you know, there were a couple of things in the '50s that made it a little bit easier, but 1968 Fair Housing Act that really made it safe for African-Americans to move in without threat of being sued in some of these suburban neighborhoods. But remember how I talked about how those realtors were kind of nefarious, and they figured out they could profit from segregation? Those guys were pretty smart, because they also created homeownership associations to enforce segregation because they knew. Like, in fact, they actually were hesitant to use racially restrictive covenants because they knew they were a violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. They knew these things were not legal when they did them. So they created homeownership associations to enforce these after they were illegal. And they did it in two ways. First way, they would say, "Anyone can buy a house in this neighborhood, absolutely, but all homeowners must be members of the homeownership association." Oh, and by the way, did I mention we're restricting membership to all whites? That was one way. There's another way, and you can find this if you go to Upper Arlington's UA memory on their Historical Society's, you know, thing. You can find there is a neighborhood, and I forget the name of the neighborhood, but they were caught on the first of -- write a first refusal clause, which is the second way. And so what this means is that every single sale in the neighborhood has to be approved by the homeownership association, which means they can deny a sale. Any sale they deny, they have to buy the home. This is Upper Arlington, though, guys, so not really a problem for these folks, right? But if they buy the home, they can control who it gets sold to. And so there was a neighborhood in Arlington doing this, violation of the 1968 Fair Housing Act. They were caught. You can read a battle on UA memory. And this is really the area where the era where zoning powers become even more important for suburbs, right? We cannot attack people for how they, you know, for their race, for how they look, or how we think they look. So we have to focus on class. And we've done such a good job of denying people considered non-white access to property ownership. There's a big wealth gap, and it's racialized, so this shouldn't be that hard, right? This is what, this is how a lot of suburbs were thinking. So why does zoning matter? I do want to stop and talk a little bit about why zoning matters. I think zoning is the most important piece of legislation that a city will ever pass because it's a value statement. It's a value statement in two ways. Not only does it determine who, what people are welcome in your community, but also what businesses. And it determines the foundation for city revenue sources. It's a blueprint for your budget. How you zone your land determines the revenue sources that are going to be available to your city. And as city council members, I'm sure you know this all too well, right? But zoning is important. It's about what's important to you as a community. And Gehanna's zoning code is exclusionary. In every single residential zoning category, you guys have height restrictions, minimum structure-size requirements. Often, I will look, but a lot of those are pulled from restrictive covenants, guys. Lot coverage restrictions. You've got to have a bigger lot if you want a bigger house. Minimum structure-size requirements, minimum lot-size requirements, and large setbacks. Your zoning code is exclusionary. And let's rank it and take a look. 69% of your zoning is residential. Almost 53% is single-family residential. And your least exclusionary area is your PUD, which seems to be the case in a lot of suburbs. But those are kind of catchhalls. If we compare you, let's look at Westerville. Westerville's 49% residential. Their PUD is their least exclusive, but they're not doing anything with it. Reynoldsburg is actually, I think, doing the best. They are 52% residential, but they're not as exclusionary. They're not super, like, they're not in the least exclusionary category, but most of their zoning areas are in the middle. They are still 47% single-family, though. Worthington, 58% or almost 59% residential. But they've got, you know, they've got a mix. Their PUD is their least exclusionary, but again, not a lot of stuff actually being built there. I do want to point out, though, that Arlington is a good thing to remind us, you know, you guys have a little bit higher residential land-use percentage than a lot of the other suburbs. That's why I put Arlington, and I'm not done with the analysis of their code. But Arlington is 83.5% residential. So you're beating them in terms of having a diverse land use and some tax base. And as long as you're comfortable with your tax base, I'm not going to criticize the percentage of single or of residential. I am interested in criticizing how much of it is single-family, though. So let's talk about how we can enhance equity while maintaining a healthy tax base in Gehanna. I encourage you to create more mixed-use districts and mixed income if you can figure out a way to incentivize it. And a way to increase density in a lot of your single-family neighborhoods, I have two ideas for you. One, accessory dwelling units. The cool thing about accessory dwelling units, particularly in those post-war suburban neighborhoods with kind of small houses, is that a lot of times, people use them as offices because they don't have offices in their house. That can generate revenue for you. You can also see older adults moving into the accessory dwelling unit and letting a younger family buy the home. So you're opening up homes to younger families who want to move into neighborhoods. And then another way is thinking about those single-family neighborhoods, looking at those corner lots and zoning them for duplexes. It allows people to change the structure if they want to, and it doesn't impact parking because you're on a corner. It doesn't impact traffic flow, but it gives you a little bit more density and a little bit more variety in your housing stock. I would say in terms of commercial development, I would focus on sectors that bring in high-paying jobs, but you're probably already doing that because that's what everybody's trying to do. But I would strongly encourage you to loosen development standards. Make it easier. Eliminate the red tape. Make it easier for people to develop in your community. And update your zoning code in a way that means they don't have to come for variances on everything. They can do the things that you envisioned for your community without having to come before council, without having to come before your Board of Zoning Appeals. And I strongly encourage you to think about ways to incentivize affordable housing. What could that look like in a suburb? So Worthington has got a bond package they've been talking about passing to fund affordability in their community. And in Worthington, I think they're challenged in a lot of ways. They don't have a lot of developable land. They can't grow anywhere but up, you know, and their reputation is not great. They're currently being sued by a developer, you know, so they've got challenges in that area. A lot of communities have challenges in that area. But they're talking about Affordable Housing Bond, which I think is great. I hope they pass it. You can also think about mandating affordability. And this takes will. Columbus is sort of doing it. You know, any development of a certain size, 10% has to be affordable. And you can define affordability however you want. You know, in some suburbs, I recommend you start, you know, not super low, maybe at, you know, 80% AMI, right? Because that's going to help with first-time homebuyers, right? People who have their first job and are just out of college and can't afford a huge house, but they can afford something in that price point, maybe, right? And in a lot of these suburbs, you can even go up to 120% AMI, and you're still going to be bringing people in who want to live in your community and couldn't afford to otherwise. You know, and if this works, as you build more developments, you can just add a few more units at 70%, at 60%, and add a little bit in. But the key thing to remember is you want to build a social service infrastructure as well. You want to make sure people are supported. You want to make sure you have transportation networks that can get people to the places that they need to go. I want to stop. Do you have any questions? And I'm trying really hard not to go too long. Like, I usually take two hours to give the first part of that talk, and I cut it down tremendously and only focused on the zoning stuff. Any questions, though? Any things you guys are thinking or anything you?
Floor is yours.
I mean, I'm done with my slides because I was trying to be really quick for you guys.
Questions from colleagues?
Well, I'd like to thank you for all this information because it was wonderful. And I have Morpsy here, so I know a little bit about you beforehand. This is a great idea that you're here. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you.
I guess one of the questions is, can you speak at all to any of the trends that other maybe suburban communities are facing as they look to update their own zoning codes? We have several items on the agenda tonight, but I know the administration's working on a more comprehensive review of our zoning code and looking forward to that later this year. But curious if you've seen trends in your studies of what's going on elsewhere?
Well, updating the zoning code is huge. Most of our suburbs, most of central Ohio has, I mean, it's at least 20 years for almost everyone or more. Some places are getting close to 50 or 70 years in terms of updating.
That's us.
Yeah. And, you know, what that means, though, is that oftentimes, every development requires some kind of variance. So everything is coming, you know, there are neighborhoods in Columbus, for example, where the zoning code doesn't even match the community itself. So if you want to do anything, you need a variance. The lot sizes don't even match what it says they're supposed to be because they're just plopping, they just plop something down on a neighborhood that was old, right? And so the more you can be up to date, and you don't have to use the PUDs as much, right? You can have a zoning code that fits exactly what you want for the vision of your community, right? And so the first thing you need to do, I strongly recommend, before you even update your zoning code, do a visioning process with your community and find out what your community wants. Have you done that yet?
That's coming up.
Perfect, yeah. Find out what your community wants. And one of the big things we're hearing in a lot of these suburbs, step-down housing. Older adults want some place to move, right? That where they don't have to take care of a yard, where they don't have stairs to go up and down, right? But where they can stay in their community, near their friends, near their place of worship, right? Near the places that they know. You know, my parents had to move to Powell. There's nothing in Worthington. You got a lot of people in Arlington experiencing the same thing. So step-down housing is huge, right? And that is something that we can get in density and with the mix of housing types, right? Another is first-time homebuyers, young people. People want their children moving back to their communities, and their kids can't afford to in almost every central Ohio suburb, right? So how do we figure out a way to create affordability for young people and for young families, right? Part of that is creating step-down housing, right? Because then you can open up housing for new people, but you also need to figure out a way to make it affordable. And homes, you know, we, you know, the auditor is, you know, I heard on NPR today that people should be expecting huge increases in their home values. People get really excited about that. And it's great for people who own homes, but a lot of people couldn't afford to buy the house they're living in now in a lot of central Ohio neighborhoods. So what that means is the people moving in to the homes near them are so much richer than they are. And when you get enough of those people, the character of the communities change because they want different amenities. And so what kind of community do you want? Who do you want to welcome to your community? That's the core of what you are deciding when you work on zoning. Yeah?
Yeah, kind of to that point. One of the issues that I think that we're seeing along with other suburbs, at least anecdotally at this point, is that corporations are purchasing single-family homes and using them for short-term rentals. And it's incredibly, it's artificially inflating property values because these corporations can charge $3,000, $4,000 a month for a single, for a single-family home, which would, is double or triple what the mortgage would be for a 30-year mortgage.
And this is the challenge. Didn't the state pass a law saying that local municipalities can't do anything about that?
Last I heard, it got held up in committee, but they were still interested in it, but there was maybe some, it had gotten stalled. It has not passed.
First thing I would say is pass your own legislation first, then. Pass something to protect those.
The MBS as well.
Huh?
The MBS, yeah.
Yeah. And then the other thing I would say is that, you know, one thing the city could potentially consider is a land bank or a community land trust. Start buying up those houses yourselves or create an entity that can do that and that can compete on that level. One of the benefits of suburbs is that often there is wealth, and there are individuals and families with wealth living in most of our suburbs. They might be willing to help seed something like that. It's something I've talked to folks in Arlington about. It's something I've talked to folks in Arlington about as well, is how do you protect those homes? And in Arlington, it's really more, let's tear them down and build a McMansion. And its spot is some of the challenges they're having in Arlington in terms of maintaining affordability. But yeah, those companies are a huge problem. And this is where regulation comes in at every level, right? There's local, but there's state, and there's federal regulation. And so I encourage you to lobby as well, both at the state and federal level, because this is not a problem unique to central Ohio. To Ohio, or to Ohio, it is a national issue. But the more creative communities can be, I think the more, I really think competing with them might actually be the approach. Now, you might want to think about other suburbs that are having this problem, too. How could you collaborate to create a pool of money where you could start preserving some of those homes, right? Across different suburbs. There might be, there might be something there. I know that's hard, metropolitan, you know, competition is big, but.
Thank you, Glennon.
Thank you. I've never talked this little.
Anything further from council? Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate your time. Thanks for coming down. For folks who came in, we'll interrupt your regularly scheduled programming, as the joke may be. We will begin the special counsel meeting promptly at 8:00. We'll recess committee of the whole, wherever we are in the agenda, to special counsel and go back after its conclusion back to committee. So if you're just walking in, if you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker slip available just outside the doors or over here with Clerk Van Meter. Get those to Mr. Clerk and we'll get you slated. Next up, we will turn to items from council office. Mr. Clerk.
Just one item here. The Division of Liquor Control issued their notice for a new permit, Social Nail Bar LLC at 362 South Hamilton Road, Suite A. I did send this to the Division of Police, and they had no objections to the permit.
Questions from council. All right. No objections. Mr. Clerk. Thank you.
I have a raising. Sorry. Never mind.
Okay. Next up, we'll turn to items from the Planning Commission. Director Blackford. I think, folks, my intention here is to go down through the list pretty quickly. I don't think director has a presentation necessarily planned, but if there's any questions, comments?
Correct. Sir, I do not have a formal presentation tonight, a couple of updates. There were two items that required some level of follow-up. One was changes to, I think it was Chapter 1155, related to storage tanks. There was a typo with the 10 and the 20. You should have the corrected version. Then there was some discussion last time around about temporary signs and political signs, so that required some follow-up. We were able to get in contact with our zoning code rewrite lead there. He is an attorney and a planner. And what he articulated to us was that for purposes of sign, political speech is like any other speech. You can't regulate any of it. So there's no issue from a political sign standpoint. But he did have some concerns about regulating duration of signs. It gets tricky, and so for that reason, we'd actually like to withdraw that section of changes, which is 116507, and tackle that as part of the zoning code rewrite. So that's the updates I have for tonight. Happy to answer any questions as you go through these 17 different sections of code.
All right. Thank you, Director. Okay, ordinance 23, this is defining hazardous tree and allowing for hazardous tree removal without a permit. Okay, 27, subdivision without plat, allowing applications to be approved administratively. Yes, Mrs. McGregor?
I guess, I'm not sure I agree with that. I would like to have the planning commission look over these things. I don't know why, you know, it's, I know it's a smaller area, but I don't know why they couldn't still have the oversight that even a larger subdivision would have, even if it's only a couple of lots. You know, I don't know why they, I just, I guess I worry about that.
If I may, that was a change that Planning Commission requested because there's really nothing in the code for them to evaluate a subdivision without plat. So Planning Commission thought it didn't serve a value, any purpose, to go for a public hearing.
Okay.
So the larger ones, larger ones being new, single-family development, when, if we ever get one of those, five lots or more, then it would have to plat that comes before city council.
So this would just be for single-family housing for this?
It could be commercial lots as well. And that's actually where we see most of our subdivision without plat since I've been here. The vast majority, I would just say, three out of four are commercial properties.
Okay.
Yeah. So hopefully that helps.
I think my intent with these would be, barring any objection, put these on for first on the 15th and then consent on the 5th, was absent an objection, so if you would prefer that to be on consent or?
I think that one on regular, please.
Put that one on regular, please, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. McGregor. Anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. 28, defining the planning and zoning administrator. Okay. The next several items, ordinances 29 through 35 are all clarifying setback language for ER1, state residential districts, ER2, state residential districts, SF1, residential districts, SF2, residential districts, SF3, residential districts, excuse me, R4 residence districts, and MR1, residential districts.
Just a quick question.
Yes, Mrs. Bowers.
Just as a package here, with the zoning code rewrite that we're looking at later on in the year, we would be, we're looking at, I think I understand that we're looking to get rid of ER1 anyway, and maybe some realignment with these designations?
There will be new residential categories, yes. That is proposed.
Okay. So this is more of an intermediary step that just cleans some things up for the meantime?
Correct, correct. There's two things that those changes to those single-family categories would do. One, it's to clean up the language a little bit, make it a little bit easier for folks to find out what the setbacks and things like that are. That's one of the frequent kind of struggles that we get. The other is to reduce the rear inside yard setback for unattached accessory structures, i.e. sheds.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blackford.
Mrs. McGregor?
I have, which one is the one about sheds in the side yard? That's?
That's all those sections.
Okay. I object to sheds without a variant, a variance.
No, it's to reduce the side yard setback, yes.
I know, but I guess I, I think those should be, sheds in the side yard should be the exception rather than the rule because many houses in our subdivisions have swales for stormwater to go between the houses. And if somebody puts a shed in the middle, they block the drainage. And I've seen this happen before.
That's part of the review process, regardless if there's a variance or not. Swales, if there's a drainage easement, then our engineering team looks at that and they make comments related to that. And I don't believe that sheds are allowed, whether there's a variance or not within a drainage easement.
But I still think that they should be the exception rather than the rule because people, I mean, you know, people have side windows, they're looking, they used to be looking at the plantings on their neighbor's yard, and now they're looking at a shed. And I think that's, you know, the shed should be in the backyard, except in rare occasions.
If it still is required to be in the rear yard, it's allowed to be in the side yard setback of the rear yard, is what that language says.
What does that mean?
So every piece of property has a rear, front, and side yard. Essentially, and that side yard setback runs along basically where the front yard stops because front yard, you're not allowed to have, you know, buildings within there. So wherever the front yard of your home ends, you would have a side yard that goes to the rear yard.
Okay.
So you have a rear and a side yard in some instances. This is saying, let's take, for example, I think SF2 says a 10-foot side yard setback for unattached accessory structures. Planning Commission wanted that reduced because that's the frequent variance they have. They were comfortable with five feet. So to the rear of the home, the, if this is approved in the example I gave, instead of 10 feet from your side property line, still in the rear yard, it would now be five feet from the side property line, but still in the rear of the house. So it still has to be to the rear of the house. It can be five feet from that side property line instead of 10 feet.
I guess I'm thinking of a shed in between the two houses. How is that defined?
Well, your setbacks are only from your property, not someone else's property. So that's a little bit challenging because I don't know where that other house would be. But essentially, if they're on the same setback, that would be your house-to-house. That would be a side yard.
Okay.
So that would require a variance to go to the side of your house.
Okay. All right. I guess I was a little, okay, thanks.
It's very confusing, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you want that on regular, then?
Right now, till I think about it, yes.
Okay.
Is that right?
That's, I have that for ordinances.
23.
29 through 35 is what I have.
Okay. That's for all of them?
Okay, all right. Maybe I could.
Unless.
Why don't you put it on the, on four? And if I have a problem, I'll ask for it to be off.
Perfect.
How about that?
Sounds good. All right, thank you. Okay, ordinance 36, which would be clarifying setback language for accessory use structures. Okay. Ordinance 37, regarding outdoor storage and storage tank size requirements in OCT, Office, Commerce, and Technology District. Okay. And 38, interior landscaping requirements, revising requirements for parking areas. Director, I had spoken with you on this one, and I thought your comments might be helpful regarding sort of the thought behind this. And, you know, my concern was regarding drainage and if these sort of landscaping requirements help with drainage. So appreciate, I thought your comments might be beneficial for the group.
Thank you. I'll try to show a little bit here what we're talking about. So I pulled a final development plan at random. I believe this one has 444 parking spaces. So our code has a number of landscaping requirements. What we're talking about are a few of the different ones related to parking lot landscaping. So what I'm going to show you here in light green, all these circles on the site plan you see here, this is where our code would say you need to have a landscape island that's suitable to have a tree planted within that area. That's in our current code. That is not a change that's requested as part of this code. So there's trees that are required as part of the landscape islands. And these landscape islands here that are in green, those are sized, the vast majority of projects being, I don't know, 19 out of 20 or whatever it may be, the landscape islands really aren't a part of an overall, they're not sized and designed to have a drainage, retention, detention component to it. All green spaces help promote that. But these are really sized and there to have trees to beautify the parking area. The code change that we're requesting to be eliminated is here in red. So these areas here, these are two rows of parking where headlights face each other. And our code says you don't have to plant a tree there, but you need to have like a three-foot screen, only in between the parking. That is a variance that is requested 100% of time on our commercial projects and is granted 100% of the time by Planning Commission. Planning Commission actually prefers that there isn't landscaping there because what we have found is that people will walk through that area and damage the landscaping. So it doesn't really serve, and it doesn't really serve, doesn't appear to serve too much of a purpose. So what our code says in two of our zoning classifications, and what the proposed change is, is to eliminate the area in red and then require landscaping around the perimeter of the parking area adjacent to right-of-way. So in that case, we'd be eliminating the red areas, adding the purple. And this example I took, it just so happened to be the areas in red, wherein the general areas are purple. That's just a coincidence. But what the goal of the zoning code rewrite is to beautify parking areas because what we see, especially in maybe some of our older commercial areas, is there's a lot of pavement and not a lot of green. People don't really like that drive sequence, driving down Hamilton Road, and you look out the window, and you see a bunch of ugly parking spaces. What the area in purple does is now require some level of screening. It's pretty much the exact same screening that you would see in the red, which would be like a three-foot fencing wall. Vegetation is typically what we see there. So it's, again, it's to soften the impact of paved areas from the roadway. That's something that, again, some of our zonings allow, but not all of our zonings. Seems like this would be appropriate, in staff's opinion, in our commercial areas. So hopefully, this graphically illustrates that a little bit better than last time.
Thank you for that. Questions from colleagues on that one? All right. Thank you, Director. Ordinance, I believe it's 40 now, allowing multi-tenant signage without master signed plan under certain circumstances. Ordinance 41, extending permit validity timeframe from one year to two years. Yes, Mrs. McGregor?
I guess, and that's for like a building permit?
Exactly. That would be, what zoning staff or what the applicant would have is two years instead of one year to go from your conditional use approval to basically the completion of that building permit process. A lot of times, it does take over one year, and that's what the code allows for.
I guess the only problem I see with that is I have seen occasions where people kind of drag their feet on a project, and so then they have like, and it just kind of is a nuisance in our eyes or in the neighborhood. They've got all their supplies, they've got things torn up. And if they now have two years to do that, I mean, if it's, if it's an internal thing, it's not so obvious. But for an external project, it seems like a long time to have somebody's property torn up.
That's really more of a construction standard, and I don't believe that this code would alleviate, whether it's changed or not, I don't think it would alleviate that issue that you're referring to. And I can think of a couple of properties around the city that maybe seem to be in some sort of state of construction. That's really more of a building code, building permit. The state has a lot of language on that. So that's really not so much a zoning issue, in my opinion, as it is really more of a building code, which is really state guidelines for that, what they allow for construction. If something was under construction and the conditional use expired, well, they would have already been issued a permit to construct the work. So that conditional use and that time period would have been satisfied. It would have been met in that case.
So you don't think that having the one-year limitation helps them speed things up on their?
No. Part of it is conditional use. In the grand scheme of things, is a relatively easy step for a developer compared to maybe like a zoning change or getting entitlements from, you know, state agencies or something. So like a $500 application doesn't really motivate them to speed things. They want to move as fast as possible. I know that was some of the, what we heard earlier is, you know, hey, to get more competitive, make things quicker and that. So, yeah.
I think I'd like on regular agenda.
Regular agenda for that one, please.
41?
And, yes, 41 on regular agenda. And then lastly here, ordinance 42, removing requirements of certain contractors to register with the city. Yes, Mrs. Bowers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Weaver. I'd like to request this one be on regular instead of consent. I think, from what I understand, specialty trades are registered and certified by the state, but general contractors have historically been registered at the municipal level. I can't account for why we're not seeing requests recently, but I've been told by people in the industry that requesting verifications for insurance is or was a common practice. So the city doing registration of these general contractors protects residents and centralizes the process so that general contractors don't have to do it with every client. And I believe that this protects the quality of construction and community assets and then helps advance property values. So I would, I'm happy to learn more about the subject, but based on what I've learned in the last week or so, it would be my position that we maintain the registration requirement for general contractors. for general contractors.
Mr. Renner? Thank you. Mr. Blackford, maybe you already talked about this the last time that we actually talked about this, but can you help educate me a little bit more? What are other communities actually doing on this front?
Well, seven fifty-nine, if we're going to pause at eight, then I guess we'll have to recontinue this.
Then we'll pick up right there.
Yeah. And I've got our chief building official who knows more about that than myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Just say... All right, folks, we're going to recess the committee of the whole. We'll pick up with our special council meeting here.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Mr. Speaker.
You made it.
We had a new one.
Got to run to the restrooms. Okay. You what?
First time on fire. Pretty conservative with the strike zone, so you had innings dragging on. At this age, you should be pretty comfortable with the strike zone.
Yeah.
Like I said, first time on...
From like Pickerington or something like that, and he was, you know, he had a tight strike zone. I've got some comments for this. I'm not going to get last.
Sort of sign up. I just wanted to pay the big ones.
Yep. I think it's much to do. Ray wants to maybe...
I'm going to go ahead and...
Yeah, right.
committed to supporting our students in their expressions, whether it is in the classroom, onstage, in their music, or using a paintbrush. Our student voices are powerful, they are critical, and they come from many perspectives. It is not for me to agree or disagree with their statements, but rather to support them using their voice in a nonviolent or derogatory way to express their views, delicately challenge those they disagree with, and commit to being a contributing member of our society. In fact, the Ohio Department of Education has set clear standards for visual arts education to incorporate critical thinking and perspective. In Grade Two, the standard is use visual art materials to express an idea that reflects their own society or cultural identity. In Grade Five, it is to compare and contrast how form and style are influenced by social, environmental, and political views in artworks. Even the Conversation City Council had last week would have fit with our Grade Eight Visual Arts Standard of understanding how social, cultural, and political factors affect what contemporary artists and designers create. In closing, Gehanna is a beautiful, diverse community with an enormous heart. GJPS students are important members of this community. I support our students using art to express their perspective and fully affirm their representation of what was created by them to display in our city, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kathy McCorkle. Is Ms. McCorkle here?
Kathy McCorkle, 677 Piccadilly Court, Gehanna, Ohio. I'm here to oppose the placing of mural artwork that includes images of Black Lives Matter, or BLM as they're known, on the Creekside Water Wall. During last week's council meeting discussion on the murals, Stephen Renner said, "I think children can stand on a podium in Central Square and actually shout whatever they want, or what they paint with chalk." During July 18th, 2022 council meeting, referring to the uncivil speech and behavior of students at the pool, Stephen Renner said, "We do have to get back to the virtues of respect." Well, I'd like to know, which is it? Should Gehanna children be allowed to shout in public and chalk for public display, whatever they want, as they did at the pool last summer? Or must we expect them to get back to the virtues of respect? So this is what we know that Black Lives Matter stands for: disrespect to police and the law, disrespect for public property, instigating cultural and racist revolution in our cities, replacing our republican form of government with a Marxist one. This is the ideology of BLM. This is what BLM supports and works towards. This is not children's artwork on how they see Gehanna. This is the political speech they've been taught in school. It is the propaganda they have been exposed to in the public school system. Attorney Mularski said last week, "The safest way then is for the city to own the art and say this is representative of the city." The safest way to make that happen is for the city to own this art and to say this is the official view of the city. That covers us. Stephen Renner asked, "By resolution?" Mularski said yes. So when reading this, a far-left council member proposed to draft a resolution at last week's council meeting. And we, who understand the times, know that even though council is allowing public participation tonight, council has already made up their minds to allow the Marxist mural to stay, if the votes are there. And I'm sure this council member thinks they are. So if council passes this resolution, Gehanna is saying to these students and Gehanna residents that they agree with the Marxist philosophy of BLM. And you don't have to respect our police. You don't have to respect our public property. You can shout and paint whatever you want, and we will support you. Elected officials at times have to make hard decisions. Do the right thing and vote no on the display of these Marxist images in Gehanna. These are not Gehanna values, and it's a shame that the Gehanna schools are teaching these to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Priya Tamil Larson. Please forgive me for pronunciation.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. My name is Priya Tamil Harrison. I reside at 762 Windward Lane in Gehanna. I am a Gehanna resident and an attorney practicing in this community. I stand in support of this resolution to hang the murals in Creekside. I believe that Gehanna has a long history of displaying student art at the city's request in this particular forum as government speech. I believe this mural is no different and is a reflection of the city regardless of its content, by its very nature of being produced by our school system at the request of the city. Thank you.
All right, next up is Ms. Sharon Montgomery.
Sharon Montgomery, 572 Bondington Way here in Gehanna. I've come to strongly urge you to approve Resolution 16 and adopt all the murals submitted for Creekside. I ask this on the simple basis of fair play. The students were given broad guidelines for creating and submitting murals to depict how they saw their city. This is what they did. After following these rules, someone, for some reason, changed the rules after the murals were submitted. I think we can all agree that it's not fair to change the rules of a game after the game has started or ended. If any one of you nine elected officials followed every rule to submit your application to be on the ballot, submitted it by the deadline, and then after the deadline were told your application was rejected because someone changed the rules after you submitted your application, you would be outraged. No matter who changed the rules, how they changed them, or why, your outrage would be completely justified on the grounds of fair play. This is precisely the situation we have now with the students' murals. I don't know who changed the rules, or how, or why, and it doesn't matter. What matters is that the students have been treated unfairly. What also matters is that the students have learned that if someone has enough authority, that person, or office, or organization can get away with playing unfairly. I can't imagine that this is what we want our students to learn. Please reverse this lesson to our students and treat them fairly. Please approve Resolution 16, accept all the murals, and let all Gehanna residents and visitors enjoy the murals they like and just pass by the ones they might not like. Thank you.
Mr. Alfred Navarro.
My name is Alfred Navarro. I live at 951 Suzanne Way in Gehanna. I'm half Italian, part Irish, and I was raised Catholic. So I learned tonight that a few years ago I was considered non-white. So I'm very proud tonight to be non-white. Very proud to be non-white here in Gehanna. I want to just say a few words about the word divisive, divisive. What is divisive? I think it comes down to a very simple idea. If you don't look like me, if you don't look exactly like me, I don't like you. If you don't think the way I think, I don't like you. If you don't see things as I see things, I don't like you. That's division. That's division. What we need to do, what we need to do is allow other people to speak freely, consider their ideas, take their ideas on board, consider what they tell us, and try to grow, try to grow. And, you know, the word divisive is getting a lot of play in the U.S. today. In Florida, they're banning books, they're banning history. And that is, we don't want to start that here in Gehanna. We're better than that in Gehanna. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fiona Hetrick Cyrus.
My daughter will be speaking tonight. Our address is 537 King George Avenue, and she has some notes written down.
Hannah?
Yeah. My name is Fiona, and I go to Royal Manor. And I will go to Middle School West. Middle School West has worked, has worked very hard on their, their art. Who cares how people look or people who they love? I want to see the artwork go up for, oh, for example, I would be so excited if I saw my artwork. That's all I have to say.
Nicely done. Mr. Kevin Deskins.
Hi there. Kevin Deskins, 4080 Spectacle. I've had the pleasure of spending the first formative years of my life in Gehanna, leaving, growing up, traveling the world, and settling back here to make a family and a home like my parents before me. As a marketing professional that has spent a decade in the career across two industries, I'm proud to have my roots here in a city that has always welcomed me home. When I heard that Gehanna City Council was entrusting the youth of our community to create art for a city, to see their, for art, for our city to see their lens, I was thrilled. After all, our obligation as a society, as a community, and as a representative, and as a people represented by a government, it is to enable the powers that be not to build for the now, but to build and improve for the generations after us, to succeed, succeed in ways that we could have never dreamt of. Tonight, you will likely hear from concerned community members or councillor members, members who are, in my opinion, afraid of how different their communities are becoming, or how they are so resistant to view any other view beyond their own myopic lens about their communities. These community members and council members are acting and lobbying directly against the initiative in this resolution that states whereas this council further honors that young people often see the world in ways that are different from adults, while recognizing that youth perspectives are also not monolithic, and whereas this council recognizes and respects that our community is made up of diverse voices, diverse perspectives, and diverse people, and that there must be a space in our democracy for that diversity to be respected and celebrated. So let's cut to the nonsense. These kids see racism. They see it in their schools. They see it in their families. They see it in their police forces. And they wish to create something positive out of that and bring awareness to it. And some choose to stay complicit and ignore the problem. I've said it before, and I will say it again. It is our obligation as a society, as a community, and as a people represented by you to build not for now, but to build a better future for them. I implore you to allow them to create from their experiences. Otherwise, you might as well build a facade of the society that you believe to choose is real. They will ultimately tear that down and condemn your legacies, no matter how small. City Council, community members, mayors, administrators, they will condemn your legacies to the histories simple and narrow-minded. Approve this resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Bryson.
Honorable council members, Mrs. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney. I'm Paul Bryson. I live at 215 Green Bank Road. My family and I moved to Gehanna from a place where I realized I was made nervous when I don't see diversity. I would look around, and I would go, "Something is wrong here." Why does everyone look like me instead of look like the people I grew up with? Why am I only seeing one set of faces? And I have been thrilled that my kid has been able to come up in schools that reflect a better experience than that. I'm proud of Gehanna tonight because I'm seeing so many people here who look different and speak different, but have a common set of values, and that's what these murals are about. Public art and students through their public art, sometimes the only voice they have. And we are called to accept the way they challenge us and our preconceptions. In this room, there are people who have lived to see the challenge of the bomb falling on Guernica in that artwork. They thrilled at the sound of Allen Ginsberg howling about the best minds of his generation. They lived through students walking into school wearing black armbands, knowing that they could be the next sent to die. They lived through the rise of punk, of metal, of hip-hop, the voices of new generations, challenging everything people had ever heard before. I know when I first heard the words from NWA that I won't repeat here because it's not polite, I wasn't sure what to think about that because I was just a kid. But it sure was expressive, and it gave me things that I really needed to think about. And that's what good art does, and that's what these kids have done. I don't, I'm not blessed to have an artistic bone in my hands, but they sure have them. And they use those to make us think and to challenge us. This art is going to exist for a moment in time for us. It's replacing murals that are there, and it will one day be replaced too. So for a moment in time, we can have the voice of these kids letting us know, like in Horton Hears a Who, "We are here. We are here." And that's what they're telling us, and we can't ignore that. So just as the art of the '60s, the '70s, the '80s, the '90s of all time challenged everyone in society and is now embraced as representing the best of us today, we have a chance for their art to give us what these kids are showing us as the best of themselves. So I urge you to adopt this resolution and say that the voice of the children here in Gehanna is the voice of the city of Gehanna and the people of Gehanna. And in case anybody else doubts, Black Lives still matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. I feel older now, actually, having lived through most of that stuff, so. Next up is Ms. Anita Bryson.
Hello, I am Anita Bryson. I live at 215 Green Bank Road. And I would really like this resolution to be adopted. So I have a few points to go over here. So this is student-made artwork, artwork made by the students. This is showing that students want representation of what they look like and who they are in their community, that they want people to accept who they are, even if they don't believe that it's happening, that they want representation. And they're asking you to let them have that representation. And so these works of art are an accurate representation of the community of Gehanna because, like, as we can see, there are people from many different backgrounds. There are people who look very different. There are people who love different people. Like, it's an accurate representation of Gehanna. And just, like, they do exist, and they are here. And it's, students want that to be seen. And representation really does matter, especially to students, because they could be in a home where maybe their parents abuse them every night or just deny that things exist, or just, like, never talk to them. They could be in a home like that. And then they go to school, and then they see all these people who are like, "No, that's okay." And then they see, "Oh, it's okay to be me. I am okay." And then they go out into the world, and they could be walking down Creekside, and their parents could say something snarky about that artwork. But then they go, they see that, and they're filled with pride because they're like, "I'm on that. That represents me. That represents everyone." So as elected officials, you are a representation of the community as well. And if people in the community are asking you for that representation, I feel like it is an obligation for elected officials to represent that because if people, like, there's so many people here. Like, we're asking for representation, and who are you to deny that to us? Thank you.
Mr. Todd Imhoff.
Hello, good evening. Todd Imhoff, 7102 Ashcroft Drive. Lived in Gehanna since '94, 30 years. I think Gehanna is great, and all my kids have been tremendously diverse friendships with everybody. So I'm not sure exactly what I'm hearing here about problems with Gehanna. We're a Jewish family, and we see this BLM symbolism in the mural a little differently. BLM, their charter states solidarity with the BDS movement. As such, BLM aligns itself in support of an antisemitic value, which is the BDS, the boycott, divert, you know, divest and sanction of Israel. A speaker last week at City Council spoke of respecting people's safe spaces. And she also said that Gehanna was not a place for government-sanctioned hate speech. I could not agree with her more. Many people, I've found out this week, it's been a strange odyssey talking to people about this issue, that very few people here know what BDS is. Most of the people I've talked to about this had no idea. Many people don't know that BLM is connected to the BDS movement. This is because the media doesn't cover it that way. We never hear about this on TV or in the newspapers or online unless you search for it. I don't know why that is. I have guesses, but I don't know for sure why that would be. I ran into, at a lunchtime gathering, a rabbi who was flummoxed by this whole situation because he would go to BLM marches in 2015, 16, 17, and then there was a BDS march. And he noticed on TV some of the same people that he was in his interfaith groups with that were marching at that. And he asked why that was at the lunch, and I explained it to him, how they're allied with each other and they're in each other's charters. He looked at me like I, like, he had no idea what I was talking about. Then the next month, he talked to a friend of his in the group, and they said, "Yeah, Israel's an apartheid state, a racist state." And then he understood what was going on with the connection between BLM and BDS. My son went to NYU for law school. Every Friday, BDS and BLM would have marches together. Not every Friday, but many Fridays during a month. He had to hide and scurry back. Law school faced Washington Square where all these rallies were happening. So he had to just keep, he said, "What should I do, Dad? Don't confront them. Just go home." So just, that's what he would do. He would just go hide and hope that he wasn't noticed. So my daughter was involved in this mural. It comes from Blacklick Elementary. She's a fourth grader. She had no idea what this symbolism means. The students that put this in, they didn't understand the antisemitic nature of this kind of a symbol. And my daughter, who's Jewish, obviously certainly, did not understand that. So it's not like they made some statement. The political symbols, the mural's beautiful and great, except for the political symbols that they put in it. And I wish they had not done that. So I view this moment as a teachable moment so that everybody can understand what it is exactly we're talking about. Because I've found in my talking with people this week that most people don't understand this connection. And if we understand it, greater understanding can be gained by the art teachers, by the kids, by the school administrators, by the city council, and all citizens of Gehanna, so we all understand each other better. For these reasons, I ask that my family's safe space be respected and that no art or symbols connected to antisemitism be placed on public property. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenda Jefferson.
Good evening, council. Excuse me. My name is Brenda Jefferson. I live at 402 Kason's Way, Gehanna. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak here tonight. I just wanted to say, I'll be very brief. I'm here just to ask for your thoughtful consideration to oppose the artwork at Creekside. Simply put, with several, I agree with several people here that any artwork or display of any matter that has politically-charged nature in it is going to just innately be divisive. And I don't think that we want that for any of our community members. I think the goal that we all have here, sitting in this room tonight, is to unite each other, to find common ground, and to grow and to love each other. And I don't think that a piece of artwork is going to bring people together because you're, of this nature anyhow, will bring people together in the way that we would all ideally like just because of its simply politically-charged content. And that's really all I had. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Susan Shiverman.
Good evening. My name is Susan Shiverman. I live at 248 Carlin Court West with my husband and my son. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have been a taxpayer and homeowner in Gehanna for 35-plus years. My son graduated from Gehanna Lincoln in 2008. Regarding the mural, I have serious reservations about including BLM, three initials. Because national news covered it so extensively during the summer of George Floyd, the 2020 riots, fires, looting, and most importantly, "defund the police" became a mantra in municipal governments, state legislatures, all the way up to both houses of the U.S. Congress. We love Gehanna PD. We want our city to be known for supporting law enforcement. I think the mural could be reworked to be less controversial. I'm sad that I'm the first one to offer a compromise. I don't believe our students will be crushed if we remove the mention of BLM. That could be easily replaced with MLK. The mural, with minor change, should stay. I am completely uncomfortable with the mention of an activist political organization at Creekside. I would rather extol the content of our character, not the color of our skin. We seem to have forgotten all of this. I was a child of the '60s. I watched assassination after assassination. I don't want to divide anybody. I want compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chrissy Kaminsky.
Hi, Chrissy Kaminsky, 494 Theori Avenue. My husband and I have lived in Gehanna for over 10 years, and we have one kid in Gehanna schools and another who's going to join her in a few years. We've loved living in Gehanna. We chose this neighborhood because of the diverse school district, and we love the strong sense of community here. The students here are enabled to grow and blossom, and we deeply appreciate the time and the love that the teachers and administrators, the PTO and the board all put into our schools. That's why I'm here with friends and That's why I'm here with friends and neighbors in support of tonight's resolution. I love that there is a space in our community to include art in the works of our school-age members. And it's outstanding that they participate and they're showing us their world through their point of view. Our students have created art within the guidelines provided to them, and this art is celebrating diversity of Gehanna. To censor the art of these students would be doing a disservice to our students and our community as a whole.
Thank you. Ms. Jessica Sisler?
Good evening. My name's Jessica Sisler. I reside at 564 Theori Avenue. I am in support of the resolution and request that you approve the student artwork submitted. I am a third grade teacher at Royal Elementary School, Royal Manor Elementary School, and have been a teacher in this district for over 16 years. At my building, we pride ourselves on the diversity of our students. We encourage our students to respectfully speak their mind and to stand up for what they believe in. It makes sense to me that when commissioned to do artwork for their community, students would create an image with a positive message about diversity and inclusion. I would be proud to teach and live in a community where the type of artwork being questioned is not censored but celebrated, and for the bravery of the students to submit and share their ideas.
Thank you. Matthew Murray?
Thank you for this time. I actually had no intention to speak tonight, but I thought, depending on what I heard, I may want to. So let me say this. Everything that I heard tonight had a lot of value. I heard the superintendent and many other people talk about the importance of the young kids sharing this information. And then I've heard other things about the responsibility of all of you. So I guess the only thing I want to say tonight is, I get the importance of supporting our students, but there was many things talked about critical thinking tonight. And I ask that you take on that responsibility of critical thinking. And is this, which is decisive, divisive, sorry, is it that important? Or can we work with each other to discuss what are there ways we can do to meet the needs of this community? Thank you.
Mr. Murray, could you state your name and address for the record? I did not want to interrupt you because you're trying to thought.
No, I appreciate that. Matthew Murray, 640 Sycamore Mill Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Chelsea Seller, 607 Valley Forge Court, Westerville. You might notice I'm not in Gehanna, but I am a teacher here. I teach at West. This is my first year teaching at West, but it is my 11th year teaching art. I was born in Ohio in Powell, but moved to Utah for several years. So excited to get hired in this district. I can't even tell you how grateful I was to get this opportunity. And this year has proven to me that I made the right choice in where I was relocating as I came back to Ohio. I love my students very, very dearly. And I deeply appreciate the diversity of this district and of this city. As an art teacher, I am very aware that symbols have a lot of power and a lot of meaning. Art is the most basic form of communication that we have, and that is what makes it so exciting to teach. Some symbols unify, and other symbols are symbols of hate and harm. I would encourage going forward, I, I hope it's obvious, I'm in support of the murals that my students worked on going up, but I would encourage going forward perhaps to avoid this kind of contention, putting something in legalese, this is not my field, so whatever that means to all of you, to have a way going forward of what symbols are acceptable and what symbols are not. I will say, as I've heard the comments tonight, I understand very, very deeply people's concerns with those symbols that were included, both from my students and from other students in the district. What I would say that they should maybe think about, and I would encourage you all to think about, is that these symbols are symbols of people and who they are intrinsically. I understand that not everyone believes that, but a person's existence, whether they're a person of color or LGBTQ+, should not be politicized. It just is who we are. Unfortunately, it's been made political, and that does put you all in a very tough spot, and I do respect that. I would also say that just, again, by merit of being a person of color or being somebody that is disabled, queer, et cetera, it does not mean that our values do not align with those of us that are not part of those communities. So when values are spoken of, of respect, as a teacher, I'm all for it. I think our students did a wonderful job respecting who they are, respecting the community that they are from in their murals. And like somebody else said, in, going forward, it would be nice to know the boundaries of the assignment before it's given. So hopefully, going forward, we will not have to have this discussion again, but if we do, I'll be here. Thank you
All right. Thank you. Craig Clausen?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Craig Clausen. I'm a resident of Gehanna at 566 Denune Drive. Just this weekend, the students of Gehanna's high school had their prom. It was an opportunity for them to have one last childhood fling, one last moment to be a kid before they graduate and get out into that, that world. Sorry, I'm getting a little choked up. My son, my, my kid was one of those who was in the prom this past weekend. They turn now to face the hard truth of what this world can do to a people and to a community. Other children in the same school district drew and painted a vision of what they want this town to look like. They drew people of all weights, all, all colors, all shapes, all sizes, arm-in-arm, holding up things that matter to them, whether that be their pride into who they are, or the fact that they see social injustice in our community, in our state, and in our country. And they drew a picture where all those members were arm-in-arm, lockstep, in solidarity. It's, uh, it's interesting that we have to have this conversation about what should be a very idyllic view of, of a painting. But this is sadly the world we're in now. In terms of, obviously, I support this initiative. I support the arts going up there. And to mirror what somebody else had said previously at this podium, I think there are a lot of words that Martin Luther King said that would be very effective here. And one of those is that, you know, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality, tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. And to that extent, yes, black lives still matter, gay lives matter, trans lives matter, straight lives matter, and this art demonstrates that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Last one. Hillary Severs?
Good evening. Hillary Severs, 6186 Stockton Trailway. Hello, counsel, mayor, and attorney. And fellow members of the community, I'm here today as a proud mother, a proud wife, a business professional, a coach, and neighbor. And I'm actually not very thrilled to have to feel compelled to come here, straight off the baseball field, in fact. And I, it's no disrespect to each of you. But I felt the need to be here because it's not the first time that I've felt called to speak on an issue like this. You know, I, I, I'm proud to speak to you about the significance of representation, the power that we have to share a sense of belonging, equity, and the importance of embracing diverse perspectives. As a homosexual woman, I am unfortunately keenly aware of the challenges that I have faced, that one in my position could face. And that's whether it be, you know, intentional or unintentional. You know, a lot of things that are happening tonight, I feel, are with good intentions. And I believe that whether we're speaking from either side, people feel very strongly in their values. And that's okay. And I think that it's our job to share our stories and, and, and help bring to light how these, these artistic portrayals of the different lives around this community are just as important as maybe the others on the other side of that that may not understand what that means to those people. My family and I were originally from Dayton. Specifically, we sought out a community that shares in the belief that diversity, inclusion, and belonging matter, a place that envisions a brighter future for everyone regardless of their background, or their identity, or how they wish to embrace it. We all have unique stories to tell, and it's through the, it's through sharing these stories that we cultivate a sense of belonging, a sense of empathy, and a sense of understanding. And we collectively have to lead the charge on this, collectively. We have to lead the charge on this. We cannot back down to the things that do not make us comfortable. We have to embrace the things that seem like a challenge, that seem like they're taking us out of our comfort zone in order to move forward. I've seen firsthand the transformative impact on, on one's ability to really thrive in the world around them when we do this. A community that embraces these values is a community that unlocks potential. In a world where our differences are all too often emphasized and exploited, it really is vital that we stand united in our commitment to inclusivity and equity. We must be active agents, each of us, for change. We have to engage in conversations that challenge us to grow and understand one another more, more fully. And again, as a mother and wife, I moved here to Gehanna to be surrounded by that, surrounded by unity, because I saw that. We, we researched for years where to move to a place that my wife and I could raise our daughter and our son in that environment. We found it. And I still fully believe that. So I'll just wrap up by saying that I, I hope that we'll remember that we're stronger together. We truly are. As members of this community, as parents, as spouses, students, professionals, coaches, and neighbors, you know, I'm here because I support the voices of all in our community, and I hope that we will truly embrace the unique tapestry that we have of stories that each of us share or want to share with others. So thank you for allowing me to address each of you on this issue this evening, and I stand in support and favor of the resolution, and I urge you to do the same. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any additional speaker slips?
No further.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Item C, resolution. I'm going to first read this, the title into the record. And the way I, I broke this down is that we, our city attorney has asked that he wanted to actually say something at the beginning. My council colleagues and I, the second step is, is that I am understanding that we do have to amend some of the language in the resolution. And then the third step is, is that, counsel, my colleagues, I'm going to ask for discussion amongst us. So let me first read this, and I'll need a first and a second per Robert's rules. Resolution 16, 2023, a resolution adopting the artwork for the Creekside water wall underneath the Grenville Street Bridge. Do I have a first?
So moved.
Have a first by Ms. Bowers. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second by Ms. Padova. Okay. End of discussion. I'm going to first, as I already stated, that I'll give way and invite our city attorney to make a statement.
Thank you. I want to reiterate this week, like I did last week, that my comments and advice are not based upon any one individual issue. This is the First Amendment case and first, and display of anything within the public forum, the public right of way. Now, the First Amendment has got to be one of our oldest laws. It's the First Amendment to our Constitution. It is still being hotly contested today. The cases I cited last week, the Bloomington, Indiana case, that's still currently pending in federal court. The Supreme Court case that I referred to was decided in September, or is decided in 2022. So these issues are still going on. These issues are also very fact-specific. Each case is divided, is, is decided on the specific facts of that case. For instance, the Bloomington case, which found that Bloomington, Indiana, did participate in government speech when they authorized these murals to, to go forward, is different factually from our case. In our, in that case, they decided that they wanted to support a certain cause and that they controlled that. We did not give any guidance to the school in this case as to what could or could not be on, on those murals. We did not have any control over what was going to be put into those things. So just those two things show how factually different this is than Bloomington. Last week, I had told you that if you would like to go forward with this, your best, the best way you could do this in order to protect the city of Gehanna is to have this deemed to be government speech. Passing a resolution to have this deemed as government speech is the best protection we can give you. I do not want you to think that I have given you a silver bullet that's going to guarantee that we will not be sued over this. I'm just trying to tell you the best way to try to help Gehanna and you achieve what it appeared to me you were trying to do last week. Now, when it comes to this, there's a lot of different things going on with the First Amendment, and I am pretty good at this. But I am not an expert in this field. So I have Jesse Schamp here, who is our outside counsel, who I've been consulting with ever since this came down, in order to hope that he can help you understand better than I was able to, I think, last week, as to what needs to happen in order for this to be determined to be, or hopefully determined to be, government speech, and answer any questions you might have that I might not have been able to answer last week. So at this time, I would like to turn this over to Mr. Schamp so that he could give you an outline as to what we're looking at and what we need to accomplish in order to try to help protect the city, and then open it to any questions for him.
Excellent. Thank you, President Renner, members of council. Thank you for having me tonight. I just want to wholeheartedly echo what Mr. Malarsky said. I agree with everything he said there. There's a lot, you know, we make our living in the nooks and crannies between facts, and so every case is going to be different. And so all we can do is give you the best possible advice for moving forward. I think everybody that came to the podium tonight has their own perspective. I would say that mine and Mr. Malarsky's is to make sure that the city is protected from legal and unintended consequences. So in that light, I wanted to briefly walk through the government speech doctrine. This was really, this has been laid down over a number of years, but really came down last year in the city of Boston case that Mr. Malarsky mentioned regarding flag displays. This is four slides. I'll briefly walk through it, and then I'll be here for any questions, obviously. When the government itself speaks, viewpoint discrimination is permitted. And so by that we mean the government has every right to have its own opinion and to broadcast that to the public. It gets a little blurry to determine if something is government speech or private expression when the government invites outside parties in to participate in the program. This might be a good This might be a good example of that. At that point, it becomes difficult to know whether or not it's the government transmitting its own message, or has it created a forum for the expression of someone else's views? So in this case, we would say, is it government speech on the Creekside mural, or is it the schoolchildren of Gehanna's speech through a mural on government property? The City of Boston, shirtless for the City of Boston, this was a 9-0 Supreme Court decision last year, so it's not really, you know, an ideological split. Boston had three flag poles outside of its city hall. One was always the United States flag and the POW flag. The second was always the state of Massachusetts flag, and the third was most of the time the City of Boston flag. But for about a 12-year period, Boston had a program where someone could submit an application to fly their own flag in place of the City of Boston flag. It had received, I think, over 240 requests for that. It had never denied a request until a religious group asked to fly their flag. The city denied their request, claiming that to allow that flag to fly would violate the Establishment Clause, and the group went to court over it. Again, Boston had no written policy. As they described it, it was more of a, sort of a ministerial act of just approving it as the application came in. And I think importantly, it had never denied a request to fly a flag before. So this was the first time out of 240. Supreme Court wrote, "There's three factors to decide whether or not something is government speech." As you can imagine there, the City of Boston said, "Our flag pole that typically has the City of Boston flag on it is government speech." The private group that wanted to fly a flag said, "No, you've created a limited public forum, and I have as much right to put a flag up as any other group." So there's three real factors that we consider in this area. One, has the medium historically been used to communicate messages from the state or the city? In this case, it would be, has the public right of way been historically used for that? Two, is the medium closely identified in the public mind with the state, city, or could it reasonably be interpreted as conveying some message on the government's behalf? And third, does the government maintain direct editorial control over the message's content? So those are the three factors. I have a few cases I could briefly walk through if you'd like about how they've applied that. What's the practical effects of that? At bottom, this is a holistic review. It asks, "Is the government purposefully communicating a message of its own choosing?" Again, is the government creating its own message that it's conveying? Obviously, in a perfect world, I think as several speakers have mentioned, we would have a written policy of objective criteria reviewed by staff and counsel, subject to community input and comment, just like we heard tonight. And again, the proposed resolution before you absolutely does speak for city council through the vote of the elected members of council. It is unclear to me and my review of the other case law if that would truly be considered government speech. I think it's defensible. I don't think it's bulletproof, just as Mr. Malarsky said. And so that's why I'm here to try and help, you know, answer questions for you and guide you if I can. The Second Circuit Court of Appeals, which governs New York City in New York, they had a case of a mural on city streets. The government of New York City said that they were going to put up a mural in the street. They were allowed to do that. Another group with an opposing viewpoint came to the federal district court and said, "If the government can do this, I want to do the opposite message." And they denied it under that framework. They said that basically, truly on the street, the City of New York had historically used lane lines, street signs, traffic signals, et cetera, to communicate messages. It also pointed to a ban on graffiti on public property, so as to say, you know, you can't have, no one can just come up there and do it. The people that have written on the streets are the government. The second factor, they said that, yes, a reasonable person would believe that writing on the actual street itself would be endorsed by the government, and did the government maintain direct editorial control? Of course, it did, because it was the government's idea. So that's a very 20,000-foot view away from sort of maybe the passions of the explicit content that you're talking about in the resolution tonight. We just want to make sure that you know that how we move forward is going to determine how other groups with perhaps far more distasteful messages than whatever we've heard tonight could come forward, and how we have to react to that. So I look forward to any questions. Happy to talk, and thank you for having me again.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Okay, the second part of our discussion, I found out today that there were, there are some factual errors, and I'd like to actually open up to my colleagues to discuss these. The first is actually in the very title. The, it's not the water wall, it's not called the water wall underneath the bridge. So I'd like to actually just strike the words "water wall" and replace it with "murals." And so the title would actually say, "Resolution Adopting the Artwork for the Creekside Murals Underneath the Granville Street Bridge." Is everybody okay with that? Okay, I was also told that the first whereas contains some errors. Rather not, can't even read some of my own digital writing. So I have a change. The first was that we were saying that the, because that was our understanding when we had our meeting last week, that the city had solicited the artwork, and I found out today that the schools are the ones that originated the idea. So I'd like to change the first whereas to simply, "The Gehanna Jefferson School District for the purpose of refreshing the murals underneath the Granville Street Bridge at Creekside received permission from the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Gehanna for a new mural designed by local students." That's a lot. I can reread it for my colleagues if you need.
Excuse me. Is that the second one that you're talking about? There's a whereas that, or is it the Parks and Recreation Director?
I'm still talking about the first one.
You're still on the first one?
I am still on the first one.
Thank you. Appreciate it, because it was clear.
Thank you.
Can you reread that again, please, Mr. President?
Mr. Weaver, I would definitely. So the change proposed is, "Whereas the Gehanna Jefferson School District for the purpose of refreshing the murals underneath the Granville Street Bridge at Creekside received permission from the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Gehanna for a new mural designed by local students."
That's factually what happened. Needs to be reflected in the resolution.
Okay.
I wasn't party to it, so I'm just, it's more than a rhetorical question, if that's factually what occurred.
Well, it is my understanding, even though I read a statement last week and no one challenged it, that I'm finding out today that that is not exactly what happened. But that's fine. We can change the wording. Anybody have a problem? Okay, the next, I believe, is the third whereas down.
Could we do the second one, please?
I believe you mean the second one, Mr. clerk.
Yeah, the second whereas, yes. I am sorry and pardon me, and thank you for bringing that up, because I've actually, I deleted it in its entirety, and so thank you.
Oh, you have?
Yes.
Okay.
And thank you for pointing that out. It's hard to see from red line to the original, but you're right. So the second whereas, as published, has been deleted in its entirety.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other comments about the second whereas?
If it's not changed?
It's been deleted. Okay, I believe we're down now to the third whereas. Yes, the third whereas has also been changed.
It would be the original fourth. The artwork was completed and submitted by students in response to the solicitation by a department within the city. That was the original fourth whereas clause.
One, two, three, four.
Yes.
You're right. Okay, so the original fourth is now...
Second.
...being changed, where it says, "The artwork was completed and submitted by the students for the murals underneath the Granville Street Bridge." Plain and simple.
I just...
That seems to, it doesn't jive with the first one. The city said, "Go ahead," and they didn't actively solicit.
Right. That, you're, Mr. Schnitzer, you're exactly correct. So I'm changing that to where now it says, "The artwork was completed and submitted by the students for the murals underneath the Granville Street Bridge." So I'm deleting the solicitation and all that.
Okay.
So that's number two, right?
So that is the fourth whereas.
We're...
Yes.
We had the first one, then we took the second one out, so that's no longer that one, and we didn't talk about whereas...
And so now this whereas will be the third. Correct.
Okay. Did we, we didn't do the one that was the, the second one?
The second one was deleted in its entirety.
Okay, the third one?
Is staying as written.
As written, so that would be number two now, correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
And the one you just talked about was number three?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
You could sing a little bit on this, too.
Okay, well, thank you for keeping us track. All right, so I don't have any other suggested changes for the whereas. The rest of the whereas...
Can we just repeat all, can we, can you say this to the...
For us to read the revised version?
Sure.
Thank you. So number four.
Yeah, I'm going to start over and read with the changes.
Thank you.
So the first whereas, "The Gehanna Jefferson School District for the purpose of refreshing the murals underneath the Granville Street Bridge at Creekside received permission from the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Gehanna for a new mural designed by local students." The second whereas, "The Gehanna Parks and Recreation Foundation, the Gehanna Jefferson Education Foundation, and the Gehanna Art Area Arts Council have generously donated funds in support of the new murals." The third whereas, "Whereas the artwork was completed and submitted by the students for the murals underneath the Granville Street Bridge." Number four, "Whereas this council appreciates the important partnership with our Gehanna Jefferson School District and its teachers, staff, parents, and students." Number five, "The council further honors that young people often see the world in ways that are different from adults while recognizing that youth perspectives are also not monolithic." Number six, "This council recognizes and respects that our community is made up of diverse voices, diverse perspectives, and diverse people, and that there must be space in a democracy for that diversity to be respected and celebrated." Number seven, "Whereas while the students celebrate a diversity in their own, in their vision, they still demonstrating a wanting of one Gehanna, a united people of compassion, respect, and solidarity to the greater good." This completes the whereas's. Any questions?
No questions? I'll just note for the record that the first few are factual, and then the, it seems like the balance are more value statements.
That's fair.
I don't have any. Assuming the factual portion is accurate, I don't have any suggested changes.
I'll just...
Bowers?
Yeah, I'll just echo Mr. Schnitzer's sentiments, is that we are relying on second and third and fourth-hand information in order to determine what actually happened. And I think that we have tried to piece it together as best as we can for purposes of moving forward with this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure that five, six, and seven are particularly even needed. It's just, you know, talk. The other ones are giving information as to what was going to be happening. I don't know, I don't feel very comfortable with that, but you can go on now, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Gehanna, County of Franklin, State of Ohio, Section 1, "The council of this city supports students and honors the way in which they see and have graphically represented our community." Number two, I want to tweak that a little bit.
Please do.
In checking, based on what we did for the title, number two should say that the artwork submitted by the students as the murals underneath the Granville Street Bridge is accepted for display at Creekside as a depiction of perspectives of residents and consistent with government speech of elected representatives of Gehanna.
I have a problem with the fact that the government's speech of elected representatives of Gehanna. I don't think that that's necessarily true. I mean, we have government speech, and I just don't agree with that one.
Okay.
You could, if it would just take that off, I think that would be, the other one would be better.
I believe that one is actually needed. Mr. Malarsky, is that needed from a legal point of view?
Yes, that is the whole crux of this.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Any other comments about section two?
I'll take that lawyer any time.
Thank you.
I'm, I was the singer, see? Not the lawyer.
Any further questions about, or comments about number two, section two?
Thank you.
Okay, and section three, just to complete, is that this resolution shall be in full force and effect after passage by this council on the date of signature by approval of the Are we fine with the complete changes that we proposed? So I need a first to amend the resolution as published to the changes that I stated. Have a first by Ms. Bowers.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Weaver. Okay, any discussion on the proposed changes to our resolution?
Just for the audience, this roll call is for the edits.
For the edits. This roll call is purely for the edits, because we respect Robert's rules per our council Any discussion?
I think I made my point earlier regarding the factual information, just relying on, relying on veracity of statements that have been conveyed to me.
Okay, Jeremy, please call the roll on our edit, or amended.
It's just the edit.
It's just the amended, that's right. The question before this council body is just, do you accept or not the amended resolution?
I'd like to speak about commas, that we need to be very, very careful with that.
Jeremy, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Angelo?
All right, so the changes are amended. All right, now continuing discussion on the resolution itself. Mr. Schnitzer?
Mr. Renner, I, thank you. I'd like to ask either the city... I'd like to ask either the city attorney, or if you defer to outside counsel, if these revisions and what I interpret as perhaps a more passive involvement by the city influences the, I think the, the main crux of the issue as stated by City Attorney Malarsky was that section two, where this is, you know, this is being adopted as government speech in order to reduce the risk to the best that, that can possibly be done. I think your prior comments were, it's not bulletproof, but anyway, based on what you've heard here, as we're making the sausage from the dais, does that influence your, your legal opinion? And, and I guess I should probably direct that question to Mr. Malarsky, but again, if you want to defer.
I'll start and then ask you to jump in if I miss anything. Basically, as I said, all of these are fact-specific. And so the more solid our facts are, the better chance this has of being deemed to be government speech. Just saying it's government speech in, in and of itself doesn't do that. They also, for instance, in the Bloomington case, they found that the, putting those mural or, was government speech. However, they said that historically, they had done some things that ended up with, the injunction was granted against Bloomington even though they found it to be government speech. So I'm just saying that it's, everything is so very fact-specific, and the fact that you do weaken some of these by saying that the city did not solicit, the city did not have control, that doesn't help us, but, I mean, those are the facts. We, we didn't give any guidance, we didn't solicit these.
Ms. Renner?
No, no, I'm, I'll, I'll wait until councils had their opportunity.
I, I agree with that. I would say that the steps you've taken tonight, you've had a public hearing, you've heard comment from a lot of people, a wide range of views, and now you're going to vote on that, that helps the case. Is it how I would want to draw up a policy for future cases? No, unequivocally no. But, is that where we're at? Yes, you're trying to hear viewpoints, you're listening, you're considering them, and now you're gonna make a decision.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Please.
Again, I believe your, your prior comments mentioned, you know, in a perfect world, we would have a written policy. Again, I'm asking your legal opinion, I'm not a lawyer by trade, so this is all kind of foreign to me. Is it too late to form a policy?
No, no. It, it's probably too late to get this done on the timeline that I know everybody wants it to get done.
Sure.
But doing one thing doesn't preclude us from ever getting a policy in place, that's, that's for sure.
Thank you.
May I?
Ms. Angelo?
Okay. We, we didn't have a policy because, you know, somebody said, "Well, why wouldn't we have a policy?" Because we never had to have one. There was, there was never a, a reason to have one, until now.
Sure.
So, if this is passed here, and this stays with the way it is right now, does this then take us to a place where anybody that comes up now will have to be, will get it? Because that, that's something that I don't think we should have happening.
Sure.
If I may, what I see here is, if you pass this, you are now establishing a policy that says that if someone wants to present something that can be deemed to be political or ideological speech, they need to come to council and see if council will endorse it as government speech. But please, go ahead.
No, no, I think that's right. Until, of course, until and unless we could get another policy in place.
Right.
But I, for the time being, that's absolutely right.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, Mr. Renner.
Ms. Bowers?
Mr. Schnitzer's concluded.
Well, I, I have further comments, but it, I'm willing to, you know, hear the rest of the discussion here. I just wanted to, because we had made some changes to the resolution, I was hoping to ask if that influenced outside council's opinion, because he did not have that information prior to, two minutes ago. I have further comments, but I can, I'll wait.
Okay. Did you want to go?
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shamp, for being here tonight and for, for updating us on this. I do want to, I think, create some clarity around some facts that I am aware of in this situation, and make sure that we, that everybody is on the same page. So, so as we heard at last week's meeting, and as I think many of us implicitly know here in this room, that there is a history of student-created murals on these walls at Creekside. At, by GJPS, in this exact location. There are 12 total murals, 10 of which are up right now, and there actually may be more than that. There's one that kind of wraps around a corner that I, is not reflected in a PDF that got circulated earlier today. In the murals that exist there, the students have, in the past, often freely expressed themselves, using words, using imagery, and they have done so to reflect the diversity of this community. They have included religious symbols, positive representation of public safety services, and the other things that they find important. Also, I wanted to mention, too, that the murals broadly are consistent with prior resolutions. We've passed resolution 14-2022, resolution 17-2021, resolution 3-2023, resolution 4-2022, and the mayoral proclamation 2021-2020, or, excuse me, 2021-20. The language that's represented, the speech that's reflected here is not inconsistent, and so I would hope that that would be taken into consideration should any outside or other entity seek to, to display art in a public location. As we saw in the flag case, and I believe that was the City of Boston case that was discussed tonight, precedent functions in the absence of written policy. And while we will be developing a policy to specifically address further placement, in this situation, we have decades of precedent, and in my view, this does not expose us to undue risk, and, and the, the two murals that have been held for, for our discussion should join the 10 that exist there today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my comments are, I guess I'm frustrated that we got to this point, where this is now before council. I, I do find it hard to believe that we've gone through several iterations of this historically without a policy, and presented to council, and I understand to the administration, very late in the game, about a week and a half ago now. I, I certainly hope that as we work to create a policy for moving forward, that we will involve subject matter experts, including the Arts Council, which, which is here this evening, folks who have done public art in not just Gehanna, but in other communities as well, folks that have these sort of content management policies. Because frankly, I, I don't think this should have arrived at council. And we are being forced to take action on something that should have been dealt with years ago, but hasn't been.
Mr. President, may I make some comments?
If they are addressing the factual content, yes.
I wanted to speak to the decades, the comment that was made about decades worth and how we got here. This is a rather unique situation. The artwork under the, under the bridge began to depict storm, stormwater sewers, to educate the community about that. It was in partnership with Parks and Recreation, they hired artists to come in and present pictures of trees and plants and birds to encourage the use of parks and trails. This is uncharted territory, for the reason we are here is because this is a new, basically a new window for us. As we've heard tonight, this involves artwork that is potentially controversial. We have a packed courtroom here, courtroom chambers here tonight, as evidence of that fact, and we've heard divergent views. This issue has always been about the legalities of the city. Once you cross over a certain threshold, it presents legal, excuse me, legal and constitutional challenges for the city. The goal was always to understand what the city is obligated and responsible for once you enter that portal. If this artwork, if this artwork goes up, I heard Ms. Angelo say, "Does that mean we have to allow other artwork up?" I'm still not sure what the answer to that question is. So I wouldn't mind Mr. Shamp speaking to that as well. But the goal of this always to, was to establish a policy in the best interests of Gehanna to protect the legal and financial interests, because we don't want to subject the city to a lawsuit by doing something incorrectly. At the end of the day, city government is, should be about best practices, or city governance should be about best practices. What this did is shine a light on the fact that we didn't have a policy that we needed to have. So that was the purpose of having this conversation. I appreciate all of the conversations and comments that were added tonight. It was never about students, it was never about the themes depicted in this, but the lack of a policy. So I appreciate the conversation.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I don't think my comments were in opposite to that at all.
No, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify, given, given the fact that we have a, we have a full house here, so.
I understand, and my comments didn't mention the content whatsoever. I think my, my larger issue is, and I think the question that you're asking, Mr. Shamp, which I think has been made, at least alluded to, but would also appreciate that confirmation, and Mr. Schnitzer has asked, by taking action on this particular resolution in the absence of a future policy, does create a bit of precedence, but we are not restricted from creating a policy moving forward to provide that guidance. And what that policy looks like, we can involve various community partners moving forward and shaping that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Angelo?
Yes. I, I received a letter, and I think all of you received the same letter, but I would like to read it because I feel it, it gives a little bit of information. Is this okay for me to do? I'd like to do it.
You're treading into areas that it then will have to start reading every letter. Is there something factual that is coming from this letter?
Well, I think this letter is, is written so well that I've actually had given it to other people as, as well, and I, I mean, I will, I will say, if that's going to become a, a problem, that's fine, then I can just say something right now of myself, but I would really like to get this going. However, I will, if you think this is something that should not be done, then I will not.
Just, please proceed, but.
Okay, first of all, I want to start. We have about a little less than 36,000 people here, you know, in our, in our community. And, and it's difficult when we have something like this, that is, then it, we're human, you know, we're human, and people make mistakes. And, and so that, that's a very difficult thing. And I, I recall last week when I saw our teacher, Dengel, and Chris, Chris, Krista there, we were sitting out there, and I said, you know, "We have 36,000 people that are in this community, and what, what could happen?" And, and I said, "Well, perhaps those two," and I had not seen them, "those two could go be placed in the, in the, in the school." And, and still have that ability to be proud of what they had done, and, and have their parents, you know, there to look at it, too. So I, that may be an, could have be a different option. And I would love to read this thing, because I do, I felt so good about it, and I did speak to the person who, who wrote it, and in fact, for quite, for about an hour, I think it was, wasn't it? She's here tonight. And I, I feel as, that this is, this is a person who has a, three children, and they're not in the schools, but they, the, you know, she was, she, her, the things that she said were so good. But I don't want to, I, well, let me just start.
Is there something of substance in the letter that you'd like to?
Well, I think there's a lot of substance here that, you know, that indeed, as you know, not all, not all artwork is appropriate for all eyes. That's, that seems something, that seems very good. And I think if you, if you didn't, perhaps, I think you all got this, didn't you? You, you got this particular letter from Brenda Jefferson, and if you read it, it, I don't know about you, it, it really made me feel very happy that she had written it, because I don't think I could have written anything quite so good as this. Perhaps we can just, just forget it, I guess. I, if you don't want to.
Again.
I don't know what to do.
Something of substance that proves your point.
Okay, I'm gonna make this, I'm gonna say this anyway. "I'm reaching on, out this evening to share my deepest concern in regards to the artwork and the new mural that is to be displayed at Creekside in the coming weeks. Please know that I find it so wonderful that our city desires the involvement and contrib- contributions of our community's youth. What better way than to show the talent of, of some of our own than a mural at Creekside? However, there has to be stipulations to such artwork. As you know, not all artwork is appropriate for all eyes. Being the Creekside is a, a shared public space and trafficked by many, it would be a travesty for some to feel disinvited to the space due to the politically charged nature of this artwork. I understand that this is children's artwork, but frankly, I, it does not matter if the artwork was drawn by a toddler, a child, an adolescent, and, or an adult. In the event of the artwork is politically charged in any way, then it will be inherently divisive. I'm sure this is the last thing you want for our community, and I'm sure all of you feel the same way, too. I certainly understand the complexity of the situation, having children of my own. It would definitely bring about hard feelings of the artwork as declined by the city. However, it is the common conversation in our household, and the sometimes that hard things, the hardest things in life are the right things in life. It is of the utmost importance that our community have spaces that welcomes all, regardless of race, religion, socioeconomic sta- status, sexual orientation, et cetera, and this means leaving these public spaces like Creekside free from any and all politically charged content. I appreciate your time, and thank you for your, for your thoughtful conversation of my sentiments. And I, I feel this is really very, very close to, to a perfect thing on this, and I appreciate it from one of our, our people here."
Thank you. Other? Mr. Schnitzer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I guess, you know, before I start, I just want to ask the audience, you know, I beg you for your patience and your understanding. We started this discussion a week ago. I think at that point, I had not even personally seen the images until about 8:30 PM last Monday night, and I think as, has been on full display here this evening, we're learning the facts quite literally as we go, and this is thus far, it seems that the issue is legal in nature, and one of our chief concerns as council members is trying to reduce risks to the community with a deep understanding of how litigious of a society that we live in. Last week, we engaged in a very technical discussion surrounding some of the legal concerns over the permanent placement of political images on public property. As I said before, full disclosure, I'm not a lawyer by trade, I'm relying on the input from our city attorney with the help of outside legal counsel to assess those potential risks of litigation of such actions, and it sounds like there are some. Apart from the technical, legal details, I don't think a juris doctorate is necessary to recognize that we live in a time where unfortunately, society is very divided. I think it behooves this council to endeavor to try and be a unifying force where we can do so, with the goal of reducing the risk of inflaming political passions amongst our community. Unfortunately, given the heightened division that currently exists, it seems probable that any permanent political images on public property risks inflaming those passions. Therefore, I think it unwise to knowingly undertake actions which risks splitting the community along political fault lines, and because of that, I struggle to support legislation And because of that, I struggle to support legislation that would make permanent images depicting political speech into the government speech of the city of Gehanna. That's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. McGregor.
I guess a lot of people brought up points about diversity, and that's one of the great things. I always tell people Gehanna is one of the most diverse communities, and I'm very proud to be a part of this for 40 some years. Creekside is a beautiful place that people love to go. And there are so many things the artwork could, and in many cases, it does show. It shows nature, businesses, the library, the Gehanna Lion. But political speech and symbols, in my mind, does not belong permanently in public spaces. If this was an art show along the path and students were displaying their own art, that would be fine. They have it there, people can enjoy it, people can walk by, or, but they take it home with them if not there permanently. But this will be permanently affixed to the bridge. As elected officials, I feel we are not permitted to place our, as elected officials, we're not permitted to put our campaign signs anywhere in the public right of way or on a public I don't see the difference in this. I guess, yes, it was created by students, but to me, that's really not, most of the murals are beautiful. They have these, the line, even the poster we're talking, or the panel we're talking about, the children are all holding hands, and that's a wonderful thing. I just think the symbols are what is the problem. And the diversity part of it is great, but the political speech part of it, I just don't think that is a wise choice for us to endorse. That's all.
Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Bowers for her work in crafting this resolution, especially so quickly and with as many facts as she could muster up, and also President Renner. I am in strong support of this resolution as well as the proposed artwork. I've heard stories over the last week and here this evening from teachers, parents, and former students who have participated in this mural or also previous ones. It is my firm belief that all of the murals combined will serve as a symbol of unity, inclusivity, and a source of pride for our diverse community. The proposed mural is an opportunity for Gehanna to show our neighboring communities that all are welcome here. By displaying these symbols of solidarity, we are showing that Gehanna stands with our Black and LGBTQ neighbors. We must not allow fear or a desire for political safety to prevent us from taking a stand for what is right. We must remember that history has consistently shown that progress is made when we challenge norms and embrace diverse perspectives. As if you have mentioned in one way or another tonight, as council members, we are elected to move Gehanna forward. I am in strong, strong support of this resolution.
Thank you. Vice President?
May I offer one last thought before we?
Mr. Weaver, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to note that I do share many of the concerns that were raised. Mayor indicated, you know, there's concerns regarding liability in the conversation last week. And this week, it was clear to me that in the absence of a policy, denial of this particular project in any, but in part or in whole, opens the city up to liability. And I don't even have to get to the content because for me, the analysis stops right there. So I will be supporting the resolution from the sheer point of protecting the city from liability. That's what I understand from council, both the city attorney and outside council. And I'll share my comments of support about these particular murals at a later time, but I don't think we even need to get to that part of the analysis this evening. That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. All right. As President, I get to have the final word, comment amongst my colleagues. Despite my own beliefs, I have always tried to truly legislate and govern as a representative for all people. You guys know this. In that vein, I constantly push myself hard to not only listen to all perspectives, but also to understand. I am a fallible human being. I am a servant of life. But let me try to explain my reasoning on this issue. I truly do understand why some symbols may be controversial. Yet I also believe that we live in a time that everything anyone says either, is either placed in one of two categories. In the end, it's us versus them. There seems to be no room any longer for middle ground. This deeply depresses me as it drives all of us further as a community, as well as the very reasoning our founding fathers created this beautiful nation. For the issue at hand, this is purely children's art. Furthermore, it is well established that children see the world around them in very unique ways. They do not have the maturity of mine as adults. We train them. But they can communicate to us. Ask any international observer, where there is human suffering or war, what is one of the things that they turn to? Children's art for communication. Common themes in our children's art are joy, compassion, beauty, unity, and solidarity. Art is taught as yet another tool to learn how to express oneself. And the freedom of expression is clearly identified in the First Amendment right. It is most unfortunate that there's been so much hype over things unseen. I believe that once the artwork in question is unveiled, most of our residents will truly, both truly appreciate and understand the symbols and their proper context by children, not adults. The murals in their totality are simply children's vision of how they see their Gehanna, a village of people helping, loving, and caring for all identities. In fact, there are many images of the American flag. There's a cross. And other common political speech, however, whatever that may seem to mean. And I'm confused by that term. Collectively, this is their statement to us. There is no evidence that the symbols in question should be or could be translated in adult ways. I realize that some may have difficulty with this, but we as adults should push ourselves to understand our world from their unique and innocent point of view. Yet interpretation is the intrinsic value of art. Personally, I would have the exact same interpretation of a child's art if it contained elements that I as an adult would be offended. And many of you know that. As many of you know me best, I do not see the world in purely polarizing political tones. I have fought it from this dais, I have fought it from Facebook, whatever that is. But I fight it. But only see and hear frustrations and thus try to ameliorate. I am asking you, the people of Gehanna, to at least consider the possibility that this is no more than what it is, a testament from children to see a new way. As an adult, I truly respect and understand your points and hope that perhaps we can have a conversation about these at another time. I will be strongly supporting this resolution at hand. Thank you.
Could I offer just one brief clarification, just from something I heard?
Very brief, because we finished our discussion, so technically, we should be voting right now.
I just want to make one clarification so you have the best possible advice. What we're saying going forward is that this resolution is government speech. And what I think Mr. Weaver said, perhaps just maybe mixed it up, was he was saying is that you would be liable if you denied this mural. I unequivocally want to say that is not true because this is, you are adopting the speech of the government. So you have the right to tell someone, no, you are not speaking for us as the city of Gehanna.
I understand, but my statement still stands. Thank you. Jeremy, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Padova.
Yes.
McGregor.
No.
Renner.
Yes.
Schnitzer.
No.
Weaver.
Yes.
Angelo.
No.
Thank you. Resolution passes. I believe now we can actually post the artwork and still make the ribbon cutting time. Is that still true?
Excuse me. All you've done is made this government speech. You have not said that these murals will go up. That's the administration's decision. You cannot order the administration to do something.
Okay. Then the next resolution, I mean.
No, you cannot order the administration to do something. That's their decision.
Then we can have that discussion at another time. But I'm simply asking, can this continue?
Can we just now have a? I'm sorry.
Can what continue?
We're concluding with our meeting, right?
Yeah. So, all right. So I think, Mr. Malarsky, I think you've answered my question.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Yep. I need a motion to adjourn from our special meeting.
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
All right. Good evening, folks. Thanks for sticking around. If folks are okay with us not switching seats, we'll go ahead and reconvene committee of the whole. You do not have to stick around. You're certainly welcome to. If you are headed out, if you can keep your voices down so we can get on with the remainder of our committee of the whole agenda. Director Blackford, you've been so patient. I'm going to ask for your patience for just another moment while folks clear out. Again, folks, if you could take your conversations outside, we'd appreciate it so we can continue with committee of the whole. All right. Director Blackford, I believe we.
We were on issue 42. Contractor.
On issue 42, and President Renner had a question for you.
Neighborhood municipalities and what they're doing, if I recall correctly. I do have our chief building official, Ken Foltz, here who can answer that question better than I can.
Good evening, Mr. Foltz.
Good evening. There are various municipalities that either enforce registration or they don't. Some of our neighboring jurisdictions do require registration, and again, some do not. And the ones that do not, again, feel the way I do, that it doesn't really have much effect on things. We require liability insurance that the business owners, the homeowners can't collect on that. Even if we were able to collect on it, we can't give that money to anyone. And we haven't had any complaints of anything at all unless it was regarding someone that was doing work on somebody's property that wasn't getting a permit for doing the work.
Okay. I understand the, some of the problems that have been stated here. I'm just asking about other municipalities. How do they do it? Do they do this and enforce it, or do they do it and not enforce it? How's that work?
Well, again, it's a variety. Some have registration and some do not.
Okay.
New Albany and Whitehall, I believe, both have registration. Worthington does not.
And do you know enough to know if they, how they enforce it, or if they do or not?
Well, it's similar to the way we have it, and some of them, the reason they have done away with it is because they didn't see the point in having it. It wasn't really benefiting anyone.
That answers my question.
It costs a lot of, a lot of our time is spent doing this. Probably two hours a day is spent trying to control the registration where everything has to be done correctly in our software. It's not like the years before where all you had was a steno book, and you just wrote their name down. You just kept track of it.
I understand. I understand. And, but you're, to be fair, you're pointing out a problem with code and you're not, you know, it's a process problem, right? And so that's what you're pointing out, and I understand that. I really, truly do.
Well, it isn't just a process problem. The other problem is the fact that a lot of business owners can't even do their own work unless they get registered. The sanctuary couldn't do their own work unless they got themselves registered. Granted, anybody like that that wants to do work on their own building, they can't do that work without getting a contractor registration.
Understand. But in New Albany, you're saying that they do do it?
Correct. That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on that? Yes, Mrs. McGregor.
I originally had questions about, you know, the valid, if there was a reason to have it. Because when my husband had his small business, we had, we were registered. And it really is, it's very simple to do online, but the only, there's no skill requirement, there's no skill testing. It's just really your insurance declarations, which you as a homeowner can ask of any contractor you have in your house to show you their declarations of their insurance. So it almost seems like an unnecessary step to, you know, I mean, it's $100 a year. It's not any big deal, but, well, maybe to a small businessman it would be, but, you know, I'm not sure of the benefit of it, what the benefit is. I don't know. I guess.
Thank you. Do we have any sense of whether folks check out who's registered with the city, or do they call, or is it available?
No, we're not aware of there ever being any reach outs for that. Unless it would be by the business themselves, like, hey, do I need to register?
Sure.
But it's not from like homeowners.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Padova.
So they're providing the proof of their insurance is, but it sounds like they're just giving, is somebody like checking that, or is it just the same as if they came to your house to do work and showed it to you?
Well, the way it is right now, we require the liability insurance. And we verify that they have it.
So is there something that you, that the city can identify that maybe a normal homeowner wouldn't be able to identify as like, this is a fraudulent?
No.
This is, they just printed this off. This isn't real.
If they have the liability insurance, we accept that, and they become registered.
Yeah.
Ms. Bowers.
So could we streamline the process? Because I think for me, the important aspect of this is not, is that their declaration page is on file somewhere. Because that's something not every homeowner knows to ask, and it's certainly something that we know is important and can help a homeowner in the event that there is an issue that arises. Is there a way to aggregate the permit? Could you consolidate the registration process with the permit process so that that deck page is filed at the same time they pull a permit?
Well, they have to have a current registration, the way our software is now, in order to apply for a permit.
Right. So I guess that's what I'm a little confused about. If we're getting rid of the registration process, how are they going to pull a permit?
They wouldn't need to, you know, have a registration if we get rid of that.
Yeah.
So it's not a permitting software issue. So I don't know if I understood your, I don't know if I'm knowledgeable enough about. So insurance, you're talking about declaration page?
Yes. Isn't that what they file when they register? Yes.
What do they, what do they file?
Well, they file their liability insurance.
Okay. So the declarations page is usually just? Okay, so the declarations page is usually just the first page of your policy that shows your policy limits and term. Yeah.
Correct.
And so that's the piece of information that I think is really important. That, I don't know that, I mean, I don't really care if we have them, you know, in an administrative system somewhere that's separate from them pulling a permit. I care about whether their liability insurance is accessible to our, to residents. That information is a thing that would be missing if we get rid of the registration process.
But it doesn't, it doesn't benefit the homeowners. They can't collect on that liability. If the contractor doesn't finish a project, nobody can collect on that policy. And even if the city was able, maybe the city attorney might be able to chime in on this, that we cannot give the money to the homeowners to finish the project.
No.
If that was the idea for that.
Yeah, I don't think that's what it would be used for. I think it would be used as information for the homeowner.
It could be, but I think what was asked earlier, has that ever been asked of us? And it has never been. But certainly if we eliminated the registration process, but we still wanted there to be some level of insurance, we can modify the permit application to require some level of insurance documentation. I believe we talked about that. So there's other ways of achieving that, if that's our end goal, is to have a piece of paper that says
Yeah.
this firm has, you know, insurance. We can collect that as part of the rental, I'm sorry, the building permit, registrate, sorry, building permit process. Yeah. We can do that. And then if it's part of that permit record, then obviously that's a public record.
Yeah, I think as long as it's a permit that's being pulled by a contractor versus just self, you know, doing it yourself, you know, DIY project. We can, if that's an option.
Yeah, that absolutely is an option. We've talked about that, and that's something relatively easy because that's not code. That's just modifying, like, a building permit application, and we can have those, you know. If it's this, you need to provide this. If you're, you know, the, you know, property owner, you know, then you're exempt from that. That's very simple. We can do that, absolutely.
I'll defer to Mr. Renner, but for me, that was my primary concern. I don't know if that would help us streamline in your experience of government.
Yeah, I, I think it does. I think it enters the necessity. I mean, just because no one's asked for it doesn't mean anything, really. It just means that maybe people don't know to ask for that. But what I want to do is want to try to help, you know, chaperone what is the overall benefit for people? And if they know that a contractor is a secure contractor and it meets certain, you know, it's not a fly-by-night crew or anything, I think that's probably overall what we're trying to hit, you know? So we hear you, and we're trying to understand it.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
One of the things I heard. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Weaver, sitting in the wrong seat.
Yeah, I am.
Mr. Foltz, you had said that one of the, one of the factors or drivers behind bringing this forward was that the, was kind of the administrative burden that it was placing on, you know, your department. The, I guess, kind of where we're at now is, it sounds as though we're going down a path of doing away with the registrations but requiring proof of insurance at the point of pulling a permit. In your opinion, do you believe that that would reduce that administrative burden, save you time, so that you could do other more, I guess, active things?
That would release, reduce the burden, but it's also, it ties up a lot of the contractors getting the permits. Because by having that registration issue, they're not able to pull the permits online. And then they have to go through the hoops of getting their registration, getting their liability insurance updated. Plus their registration current. So with all those things, and if we have to, we do now, we even track the state license. So they've got three things to keep updated.
Yeah.
And they get frustrated with the problem of having to do, you know, not just one thing or two things, but three things to keep things going in order to get their permit.
I just want to clarify the question. It sounds like what's on the table right now is perhaps a consensus is forming of doing away with, with the registration aspect. However, in lieu of that, it sounds like what the path we're going down is, at the point of pulling a permit, which we're not talking about doing away with permits, you would need to present some form of proof of insurance. Again, do you think that that would streamline your day-to-day functions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There's a, would, if we change it so that they have to pull it at the time of the permit, would they still have to, would the hundred-dollar fee still be there, or would we just not do that? We would just have, ask them to show us their proof of insurance?
We could just have them show us the proof of their insurance.
Okay, so, all right. So that'd be a monetary benefit to the contractors, then?
Correct. Well, not just to the contractors, but to any, anyone that was having work done. That fee is not added on to their, their project.
Right. Thank you. That's a good point.
Did we still want to, I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Padova.
So then if we do away with this, would it, would, it would just be the, either like a company coming to pull the permit and they would have to show you the insurance? Or just a homeowner could come and pull the permit for, like, a friend to do work for them? Am I understanding this correctly?
Yes. Homeowners right now don't have to be registered to do their own work.
Okay, so they're already able to just do that if they want, like, a friend to do the work for them? They can?
Correct.
So I'm confused when you said that if, if, like, you used Gryn as an example, if Gryn wanted to do work, they have to pull a permit. Were you saying if they were having a contractor come?
Currently, they would not be able to do their own work. They'd have to hire a contractor that is, to get registered or register themselves.
So it's different for businesses?
We don't have a restriction on who would be registered.
Homeowners are exempt, not tenants, not commercial property owners.
Thank you. That's why I was getting held up.
Thank you. I think we'll keep this one on regular agenda.
As is, or are we talking about maybe making some modifications here?
You tell me if we want to make the modifications now.
I don't know. I got the sense that we were kind of coalescing around some changes.
If you just are gonna have a requirement when they pull their permit, does that have anything to do with the code we're changing here, we're eliminating?
I believe that code can still be eliminated. It would be updating our, our applications and such. I don't think we need a formalized in code. And like I said, with applications, it's very easy. I think what we would want is just direction on, you know, a few examples of, you know, are we okay with commercial properties? If it's a tenant, are we okay with, you know, some various? Because we have some exemptions already. Those folks would be exempt from having to provide that declaration and that. So I just think we need a little bit of making sure we understand who's exempt from declarations. Like, if we want a tenant to be exempt from providing that, that insurance, we can, we can have an exemption for them, or we can require it. So it's just whatever you all want, we can do.
Absolutely. Mr. Schnitzer.
Mr. Vice President, I huddled up with my colleague to my right here. It sounds like that, just removing the registration is fine. We've, we've given some feedback to staff of, in lieu of that, what we may prefer to see. However, it sounds as though this can go forward as is.
Mr. Renner.
Just so we don't lose track of this, when might we expect to see that, that application revision?
We can get to that this week, you know, at least have one mocked up to, you know, maybe show what that looks like. Again, I just think just a little bit of, of direction on who we want to be exempt. Homeowners are already in there. It doesn't sound like there's an appetite to change that. But commercial property owners and tenants, so Gryn is a tenant within a commercial shopping center. Do we want Gryn to be able to be their own contractor and therefore not have to provide the, the insurance? Or since they're a tenant, we'd only feel comfortable if it was a property owner. Whatever direction, we can mock something up and we can have it for.
So if I may, this.
I'm trying to think through this. It's ten o'clock at night.
No, I, I, so I, just, not to anticipate the question, but, so we're on for first on the fifteenth, next week.
We already had a first, didn't we?
No, because of charter, we could not, because it's a zoning change.
We had it last.
Thirty days.
First reading last week.
Yeah.
We didn't have any readings on the proposed planning commission changes. They all were requested to come back to committee for further review.
Are they on the agenda?
I thought they were on the agenda, but it is ten-ten, so.
I understand, but we had to wait the thirty days before we could do the first, or, excuse me, before we could do the hearing.
That would just be on Part eleven, the zoning code changes.
Either way, we still need to come back for first next week. There's an intervening committee of the whole and then a hearing for the zoning change, correct, Mr. Clerk?
Just Part eleven.
Just Part eleven.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think, not to speak for the group, but are folks okay with regular agenda? Ask for this particular item to come back to committee? That.
Forty-two, twenty.
Yes, forty-two, twenty, twenty-three.
That's fine.
Does that work for everybody?
We don't want that as part of the public hearing. We want that as another committee.
Let me ask you a process question. I mean, do we need to tie the permit to ordinance forty-two, you know, two thousand twenty-three? Or can they do that separately with sort of an acknowledgement that, yeah, they're gonna work on it?
I don't feel that's necessary. I guess I was just trying to get at, like, when we might expect to have this as a discussion item on a future committee meeting, but it does not have to hold up the ordinance, in my view. That is my, that's my.
I haven't heard anything that's gonna hold up the ordinance itself. It's just a process. It's gonna be on first reading. It's gonna be on second reading.
Yeah, and maybe just as a separate discussion item in two weeks or four weeks.
I was gonna say, I mean, that'd be very easy and very quick to do as part of, like, the public hearing when there's a vote to show what that looks like.
Sure, yeah.
If that, if that's okay, because that's about four weeks, I think. Yeah, we can absolutely do that to make sure everyone's comfortable with, with our approach on handling that.
Yeah, thank you, Director.
That sounds good.
And I think it'll help spread awareness about, you know, that resource being available.
Yeah, yeah. Change. Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
No, thank you. Thank you both.
Appreciate the direction.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz.
Mr. Clerk.
So this is not coming back to committee?
Not coming back to committee. Thank you both. Just a blanket statement of thanks to staff for hanging out with us this evening. Appreciate everyone's patience. So just thank you. Up next, items from the Department of Engineering.
Chair Weaver, members of council. City recently opened bids for the East Johnstown drainage improvements. Four bids were received. The work consists of roadside drainage improvements along East Johnstown Road in the vicinity of Larry Lane, specifically four ninety-three and five nineteen East Johnstown Road. Staff is recommending a ward of contract to Dirt Dog Excavation in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and change, plus the ten percent contingency, and looking for permission to enter into contract with Dirt Dog. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, are we okay with the first and consent?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Director. Items from Department of Parks and Rec.
Good evening. The Department of Parks and Recreation is in progress of a mountain bike trail to be located at Academy Park. A trailhead was identified as a, a resource for that mountain bike trail to be a hub of education and an opportunity for lessons and bike repairs. That project is as eligible for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Nature Works program for alternative funding. The Parks and Recreation Foundation has graciously supported the initiative by providing funding for a third party to provide a grant writer with the coordination of the Parks and Recreation Department. The application does require a resolution of authority in order to apply. So the administration is respectfully requesting for a resolution of authorization to apply for the ODNR Nature Works program.
Questions from colleagues? All right, first and consent. Okay. All right. Thank you, Director. All right, last item this evening. Items from Senior Director of Administrative Services. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Director Berry and I are here to do a staffing re-aligning presentation in conjunction with the staffing ordinance, or salary ordinance changes. The Department of Administrative Services, including Human Resources and Finance, evaluate each vacancy that occurs throughout the year with the affected department to determine what role or position is needed to be filled. We then determine the appropriate job classification to fill that vacancy. During this process, we also look at internal and current staff and their ability to grow and develop at the city. We then look to determine if there's an opportunity to realign staff for efficient city operations. Promoting and realigning current staff enhances the city's effectiveness in building services to businesses and residents. It also allows the city to retain talent and build culture. We are here this evening to amend the salary ordinance and present mid-year staffing realignment. The first slide has some of the requests, and some on the request side I'll go into a little further in additional slides. On the left-hand side of the screen are job reclassifications or pending job audits. The first is for a management analyst one to be reclassified into a management analyst two to become a business analyst for technology upgrades, records, and procurement. As the chief has talked during budget discussions and here this year, the division is, currently has an RFP out for a brand-new CAD RMS system that dictates a business analyst to assist with that project. The second item is for reclassification of an administrative coordinator from the Department of Planning to a management analyst one under the Department of Administrative Services to assist with claims in regards to tracking with our risk insurance, a business analyst for tech projects that enhance the city's operations, health insurance billing backup, process requisitions and purchase orders for IT, finance, HR, mayor's court, and assist with safety training and compliance. The third item on the reclassifications and job audit side is to reclassify current administrative assistants into administrative coordinators. Those administrative assistants in those three departments assist with department or division-wide projects, assist in the implementation and maintenance of our asset management system, procurement, and supplies ordering. And as Angie's sitting over here, she also assists greatly with our sidewalk program in answering residents' questions and inquiries. On the second side of the new requests, the first request I would like to discuss is the management analyst one for records for the police department. As we all aware, the police have numerous technologies that are subject to public records. In order to centralize that collection of public records for the police department to give to the public, we're requesting to add a management analyst one. They will also assist with video redaction from cruiser cams and body camera, and overall management of police records. They will also assist with preparing for new technology that will allow us to get records out and then, again, centralize the public records responses. If you have questions, if you can interrupt too, that's fine. I know I'm talking fast, sorry. So the, the next two items are everybody's favorite. I do have org charts to share with you. So like we did during the budget presentations, I try to stick with the same color theme. So the items marked in yellow are new positions, the items marked in green are pending reclassifications, and the items marked in blue are existing and positions that were approved during the two thousand twenty-three budget. So the first department is public service. During the two thousand twenty-three budget presentation, we identified that additional staffing requests for the Department of Public Service may be made after a director is on board. Director Ann Verse has graciously agreed to join me this evening here, so, and stay late with me. So the first item I'd like to discuss is the manager of public service. This is to refund the manager of public service. This position was vacated.
Operations manager?
Oh, sorry, yeah, what did I, yeah, sorry. Sorry. The operations manager was vacated and we did not fill it at that time. This position is needed to align the operations of fleet, streets, and utilities. This position will assist the city with sustainability and food waste programs, also assist with succession planning, traffic signals, the lead for utility management that includes water, sanitary, and sewer, and EPA regulations. In addition, this employee will assist with managing contracts. This position would be the promotion of an existing employee and a backfill of that vacant position. We also have salary savings for this position as we had a part-time manager vacancy that was funded in the budget. And that employee is no longer with the city. In addition to the manager of Public Service, the other new position being requested this evening, and this is the amendment to the salary ordinance, is a supervisor for customer service. We've been conducting a staffing analysis dating back to quarter four of last year on the utility billing and customer service aspects of the city. This position would manage the day-to-day operations of utility billing and customer service, assist with complex reporting, and service enhancement projects. The other item is the administrative... A reclassification of the administrative assistant to a coordinator, as previously discussed. And then the green maintenance workers you see down there at the bottom, those are two vacancies that were reclassified into maintenance workers at a cost savings to the city. The next department is the Department of Planning, taking that administrative coordinator vacancy and realigning it into a manager of planning. This is the second request for the amendment to the salary ordinance. This position would manage the day-to-day activities of the department, provide direct support for the employees and the customer service-facing employees in addition to code enforcement. This would assist with the city's succession planning efforts, also learning planning and zoning functions from Director Blackford. They would also manage the rental registration program and all decision points for that program. The budget impact for these? Director Berry is here with me today to answer any detailed questions you may have about budget implications. Overall, Director Berry has determined that no supplemental dollars are needed at this time from the general fund. During the Department of Finance's mid-year review of salary and benefits, any needed transfers or supplemental requests for the proprietary funds will be brought forward. Director Berry anticipated the addition of the new positions and some of the reclassifications will increase of about 1% across all funds moving forward into 2024. As staffing evolves, we will continue to look at positions and process improvement opportunities citywide. We respectfully request emergency and waiver in order to effectively recruit the vacancies and fill within Human Resources standard operating procedure of 60 days.
Thank you. Questions from my colleagues? Yes, Mr. Schnitzer.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you repeat the budgetary impact? I thought I heard nothing from the GF, but 1% overall in the out years?
Yeah. We have quite a bit of salary savings this year. Just the slow recruitment of individuals. So what I did was I went back and laid in what the potential was for hiring for some of those vacancies, or they may have been for a full year. But now we're now anticipating until June. There was also the onboarding of some individuals where we had budgeted for family insurance and possibly rates that were a little higher than what they were actually on-boarded for. So I did kind of a quick analysis before we do that mid-year projection once we get kind of everybody in place. But just looking at all the movements in realigning the budget with what's actually happened through the first quarter, there are salary savings available.
Okay. And just to get a little bit more granular on that, I thought you said 1% in 2024. Is that just the salaries and benefits line item in the GF? Or is this sort of enterprise-wide, which would take into consideration the special revenue funds as well as the enterprise funds?
Yeah. So general fund is 1%. For the others, it was right about the same. And then for two of the special revenue funds, there's actually a savings moving into 2024. Streets Fund is probably going to save about 1%. State Highway about 1%. But the others are increasing an average of about 1%.
Of the salaries and benefits?
Salaries and benefits. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Just for these realignments and new positions?
Correct. So basically, what I did was I took what was approved in 2023 and said, okay, if everything was status quo when we moved into 2024, here's what it would be. Adding these new positions and these realignments results in about a 1% increase.
And so that just a dollar figure?
For the general fund, it's about $300,000. For proprietary funds, it's right around $81,000 for water and sewer, and about $23,000 for the stormwater. Then you have some savings in those other funds. Street, about $27,000 in savings. State Highway, about $2,000. The engineering or public service fund will increase by not even half a percent, or about $7,000.
Are you still thinking? Ms. Barris? Were you... Did you follow? Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. I see emergency waivers requested. So I appreciate your clarification on the why the request for that on for... Regular agenda for next week. All right. If that's good with everybody. Is there any other business for the committee this evening?
Hope not.
Nope. Again, thank you, everyone. Thanks to the community members who are here. Thank you, staff. Without anything further, we are adjourned.